Board of Selectmen to order, can I have acceptance of the agenda?
Yeah.
So moved?
Second.
Second by Mr. Harris. Do we have any walk-ins tonight?
All in favor?
All in favor?
All in favor.
Aye.
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 Sorry. Do we have any walk-ins tonight? Frank, come on up.
Just take your minute of your time.
Just your name and address, I know everybody knows your place.
Frank Snow, Countryway, Chairman of the Conservation Commission.
Thank you, Frank.
And just wanted to, I know you're working on appointments and I hope you don't mind, just want to give you a couple, a little update on where the commission is with things and what might be important to consider. The commission's, as well as the planning board and several other boards, have gotten really busy. The uptick in the economy, it's brought in more filings, more applications. With more marginal property being considered, the filings are more complicated. So that leads to more complicated hearings. So just in considering people that have applied, hopefully you'll be able to look at people with some experience. I think that would be really helpful. The other thing that I think is going to create more complications for us is the FEMA maps. It's going to broaden the area of jurisdiction and make the filing, other areas more complicated. So there'll be, if they're in an increased velocity zone or flood zone, it's going to make all of those types of filings, the number of them increase and the complexity of them increase. Both of those put a load on the agent and hopefully with some experienced members, that can diffuse a little bit of his work. So I'd like to just, if you could keep that in mind when thinking or, I don't even know who's applied, but keeping those things in mind when you do that. Secondly is, you know, I know that you've got to try to hold to the term limits of certain members and I think Penny Pipes is one of the members that's come up, that's got a fairly, has been serving now for a long period of time. I just, maybe a little lobbying here, but you know Penny has served with the commission and even before that with her late husband, working on trails and things, she's been involved in a lot of that work. She's done countless walks through the woods with different people. She's, I mean, one time she even used her own money to build a bridge to span an area that was difficult for people to traverse. But probably more importantly lately, she's been, she's now been the CPC liaison from the Conservation Commission and she's been working really hard on the conservation restrictions and in a conservation, a holder of those. And she's been immersed in that for years. The other day she and I went down to the Wildens Trust and she had a packet of paperwork that she's been compiling for that sort of thing. So she's been putting a ton of time into getting that done. It's something that we really need to complete and her serving with CPC has been done that, has been really helpful in getting that moved along. And Penny's not afraid to drag people into stuff. She recently recruited her brother, our former town engineer, to help us do the access roads and parking and things like that. And she's, another step that she's taken. And so I know you have to consider other folks and I know that you want to spread this out, but if you could just keep those couple of things in mind when you consider, whether it's tonight or whenever, that those are important to the commission right now. There is a lot going on and we could use folks that have some experience. Pat's already, he's on a two-week vacation and I've already got some homework, so if you would do that, I'd really appreciate it.
Appreciate your input, Frank, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any other walk-ins tonight? Seeing none, move on to the report of the town administrator, Tricia?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a number of items to go over tonight and we'll skip a little bit on the agenda. First, a very quick public facilities update. For the public safety complex, the chiefs and Kevin Kelly went to look at the furniture and equipment last Wednesday in Boston. There's also some furniture here on test for various officers and firefighters to try out. And so the FFNE portion of that is in the sort of cost and compare stage right now. Dorn Whittier has an experienced person, an interior designer who specializes in this area that's been helping. Both the public safety building and the library schedule, the library building are going great guns with this beautiful weather. We issued for the library yesterday their photography contest. All the signage in the library, it's going to have directionals and informational signage about the stacks or each individual room and it allows you to insert a photograph that can change right beside that little signage. And so they've opened that up to the entire community. So hopefully folks will want to participate in that and you can get all the information you need on our Facebook page, our website, or the library website. I wanted to mention that July 1 is the beginning of our fiscal year, June 30 is the end. So Nancy Holt, our finance director, will be doing year-end stuff with you. And all new budgets that were approved at town meeting in April get loaded July 1. As of July 1, we're on one of the first sections of our hardware and software conversion to the MUNIS system that you've been hearing about for a couple of years for accounts payable and bills payable. So all the staff have been trained on that. I want to publicly thank Nancy and her staff. It's been a Herculean task to get the training and the conversion to do all that. And now we're moving on to hopefully automate payroll in the next six to 10 months. I did want to reiterate for people at home that if they want more information about the buildings that we are building, the Public Safety Commission meets every other Tuesday. So if the selectmen are not meeting in this room, the Public Building Commission is meeting at 7 o'clock on Tuesday. And people can get, come to those meetings, ask questions about the projects and get accurate and current information if they should have any questions. I did want to update the board on a few other things. As you know, we had 4th of July on Sunday and I have a report for the board on how that transpired. I believe this was the fourth, fifth, fourth year of the bonfire ban. I'm pleased to report that it's really something that's now become established within the town as far as the rules and the regulations. The fire department still distributed flyers and we also distribute them widely to remind people that campfires within certain parameters are allowed but not bonfires. So I have a police, fire, and recreation report that I quickly want to share with the board. On the evening of July 3 for the Citewright Police Department, there were seven arrests. Three of those were for assault and battery on a police officer. The other four were for disorderly conduct and minors in possession of alcohol. Ten persons between the ages of 15 and 19 were placed in protective custody and eventually released to their parents. Three teens will be summoned to court for possessing alcohol. Of all those arrests, there was only one Citewright resident and it was unrelated to any of those things that I just mentioned. The other arrests were individuals from Quincy, Milton, Randolph, Plymouth, Braintree, Bridgewater, Hingham, Pembroke, Stoughton, and Marshfield. So clearly our residents, I think, are observing our regulations and having a safe and happy holiday and that, I think that's commendable on a part of the town. We still have the challenge of thousands of teenagers and youth on the beach at Humorock and that is something that's a challenge. But for the second year, the police department has a command center with the chief there and present that helps disperse the crowds after 10:00 PM and that worked very well. And we also have a lot of assistance from the Marshfield Police Department that we want to publicly acknowledge their thanks as well. So I think that, the chief reported that the mainland of Citewright was very peaceful and remained quiet and the police department and the fire department, as they do every year, will debrief about this event so it can get better each year. Moving on to the fire department, we had a small brush fire on Newell Street, which is in Humorock, that they were able to respond to very quickly because the brush fire truck, the brush truck was actually responding from another call. So from Friday afternoon, July 1 to midnight on the 4th of July, the fire department had 23 medical calls, 19 investigations, five motor vehicle accidents, and three fire alarm calls. So that's, those numbers are much reduced from when you were hearing the report three and four years ago. And finally, it was beautiful weather, our beaches were open, everybody on the east coast went to our beaches. And as often the case, one or two times, I can already report that the head, one of our head lifeguards did a save of a child that was in trouble in the water yesterday. And Cullen Sweeney, who's our head lifeguard, went and saw our little boy struggling in the water and brought him out of the water, brought him to his mother who was unaware and he was checked out and he was okay. So thank you, Cullen, and also, you know, for the great work that our lifeguards do and the recreation staff do in training that staff. I have some other things in my report, but I didn't know, let me get through the report and then I'll let you do that. Last week, the town received a $207,000 green communities grant. This is our sixth or seventh, well, that's not true, fifth or sixth green communities grant. There's 155 green communities in the state right now. We were one of the first in the Commonwealth back in 2010. The Commonwealth awarded 47 competitive grants last week and of those, only five were on the South Shore and we were one of them. So I want to thank Kevin Kelly and Laura Harbottle, who worked really hard to get that grant in. What's it for? It's for variable frequency drives, for four water treatment and well pump motors, and installation of an air handling unit motor, motors, and light fixture replacements at Jenkins School. So as you know, we've been able to maximize the money the town appropriated in our ESCO project to change them out for the green communities grants in terms of a catch match. So that original ESCO appropriation's been able to go much further because we haven't had to use some of that because we get the green communities grant to offset it. So that's great.
What is a variable blah blah blah?
I knew you were going to ask.
I'll ask Kevin when it comes in.
And that's the description.
Because it went on like, we got more than one, we got like four or five.
Yeah, we got four, right. And they're for the sewer and water departments. But that was the description. Kevin Kelly would know, but. So then, last week, we had the pleasure of meeting with two scientists from the Netherlands about coastal protection and coastal impacts. Nancy Durfee had attended a seminar in Boston. The city of Boston has a relationship with these folks and we encouraged them to see if they wanted to come to Citewright and see what we're doing and some of the coastal impacts we're experiencing here. So we had a roundtable discussion at the Maritime Center a week ago with Kevin Cafferty, Nancy Durfee, Dan Smith, myself, and Laura Harbottle to talk about Citewright and some things that they're doing across the ocean that are fairly progressive. And we've often been told as of late that we should look to European models for some of the things we're doing with climate adaptation. So it was about a two-hour meeting. The gentlemen that were here were actually getting on a plane to fly back to Amsterdam right after our meeting. So we hope to establish a more ongoing collaboration with them. I just want to mention their names and please forgive my pronunciation. It was Carter Kraft, the Senior Economic Officer for Climate Adaptation from the Kingdom, for the Kingdom of the Netherlands. Professor Dr. Eddie Morse, Climate Change and Adaptive Land Water Management at the University of Wagenengen. And Correll Ayer, the Program Manager for River and Coastal Management at Deltary. So we'll be sending them a thank you letter and hope to continue the collaboration with them. And I want to thank Nancy again for helping us set that up.
Trish, did they leave anything as far as information for us to read or was it just purely conversational?
No, it was a conversation. I mean, their relationship with the city of Boston has resulted in some of those kinds of things that Nancy already has, so we have them already. I can tell you a lot more about some things they suggested, but I think the coastal team staff here wants to sort of distill it first and look at. Mostly it centered around how Holland has developed their coastline, which is below sea level, and their economy is really dependent upon it and how they allow and don't allow development. And, but also it's very nationally supported because it's a very important thing to that country that they do it. But it was, but you know, they've sort of taken the long approach as far as making changes to coastal challenges. So instead of doing piecemeal piecemeal sort of on a micro level, they've taken the long view of a macro solution, even though the rewards of that might be 10 or 20 years out because the 10 or 20 years will eventually come and they will have done that for the long view. So that's sort of what we've been doing in relation to the study that we just got from John Ramsey. And then finally, two personnel issues I want to mention. Q Cutler, who's, everybody who's ever taken a dial a ride at the Council on Aging knows, is retiring next week after 16 years with the town. I want to publicly thank Q. And there's a coffee for her at the Council on Aging at, Aging at 9:30 on July 15 for folks that want to wish her well. And finally, our IT Director, Bill Sheehan, will be out for the next several weeks. He's the proud father of brand-new baby boy born today, Brody William Sheehan. So we congratulate Bill. Our computers are not working tonight, so we're already panicked and he's only been gone one day, but we'll work it out. And I'm happy to answer any questions, Mr. Chair.
I just wanted to go back to the weekend. Citewright Police did an amazing job. I don't know, the numbers I heard from Marshfield were up towards a 4,000 people taken off of the beach in Humorock and very, most people were courteous and just the fact that what Mike Chief Stewart and the police did was really commendable, very commendable.
Yes, I agree. I saw Kim down at Beggety a couple of times and they were patrolling and top of things and did a great job. And I, did we implement a new system kind of at Humorock in terms of triaging, any issues?
Yeah, I think we have a command center right there at the bridge and the chief is actually there, which, and they debrief, as I said, every year and it gets a little better. So that really, 10 o'clock comes and they're done, everybody's out of there. And I think last year was the first time I think they did that, I could be wrong. And so people sort of know the drill now.
That's great.
Anybody else?
Nope.
Okay, so you're all set, Tricia?
Yes.
Okay, so we've got, Mr. Lappin wasn't able to make it. So we're going to move on to 725, some outdoor entertainment permits. The first one is a discussion vote at, for a permit at 47 Wampatuck Ave on 91016, DJ for a wedding from 6 to 11:00 PM. Chris Bagley?
That's me.
All right, so just a name and address.
Good evening. I'm Chris Bagley, 47 Wampatuck Ave. I'm here today to request permitting for my wedding on September 10.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir. We're hoping for the entertainment to be around from 6:00 PM to 11:00 PM.
Have you notified your neighbors?
Yes, I have.
And how, what street is on again? I'm sorry, Wampatuck?
Yes.
Great, till 11 o'clock and you're having a DJ?
Yes.
Outside?
So it can be unplugged. If it comes in.
All the neighbors seem to be on board?
Yes.
Motion?
I'll move to grant an outdoor entertainment permit to Chris Bagley located at 47 Wampatuck Avenue, Citewright, Massachusetts on Saturday, September 10, from 2016, from 6:00 PM until 11:00 PM for a wedding.
Second.
Second by Ms. Curran. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
Thank you very much, sir.
Congratulations.
Thank you, everybody, thank you very much.
Next, we have a discussion vote for Reva Restaurant. We're running a little bit early, are they here?
I'll see you.
Oh, yeah.
Jump, jump over it.
Yeah, we're going to, we'll go back to that. Mr. Warner, discussion vote, change of Sunday hours, Milworf Restaurant. How are you, sir?
Good, thanks. Bob Warner, Nathaniel Way. We'd like to extend our serving hours on Sunday morning from, we're currently licensed at 11:00 AM and push it back to 10:00 AM, which I believe the state changed a few years ago.
Right.
And it's, and it's up to the municipalities to adopt whether they want the establishments to do that or not.
Correct, okay. I mean, I think it's nice because you've got a great brunch there. I think that would certainly help your brunch out a little bit as well.
Thank you.
On motion?
We're just changing it on Sundays, right?
Just, just.
We've done it for, what was it, Reva?
We did for, right, Riverside, I thought was the other one.
Riverside may have it as well. Yeah, motion?
All right, I'll move that the Board of Selectmen approve the change of hours for which alcohol, alcohol can be served on Sundays from 11:00 AM to 1:00 AM to 10:00 AM to 1:00 AM the following day for SCW Corporation doing business as the Milworf Restaurant.
Second.
Second by Mr. Vignani, further discussion?
Yeah, would it be effective right away? Should we put a date on it?
Should it be effective this weekend?
Or as soon as we sign it? Michelle, it's probably effective.
Could be effective on Sunday.
Soon as it's better.
Yeah.
Do we have it to sign, the packet? You'll have it signed it?
Any further discussion?
No, that was it.
Nope, we never have any issues.
Got a vote on it, though?
No, no, awesome.
All in favor?
All in favor.
Yeah.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I thought you were going to the next one, I'm like, whoa, whoa. No, I'm all set.
Okay, so we're going to move on to Kevin Cafferty. How are you, Kevin?
Great.
What's your list?
First is a discussion vote of a 2017 Dodge Ram 5500 one-ton truck.
There was money allocated to the water department in the last budget. We are looking to purchase a one-ton truck that can be used for small excavations and also snow plowing. And we went through the state bid list in Plymouth County and we came up with the following prices and the following truck. And I think it's a typo, it's a 2017. The sheet I have for the action request says 2007, but I think that was an old one.
Yeah, this is on our paperwork.
It's a brand-new, it's a brand-new truck.
Good. Does that be a lot for a 2007?
Yes.
Did it pass, what, when did it pass, at what town meeting?
The last town. This past one, yep.
Soon as I find it, I'll give you a motion.
Okay.
Plow with it, Kevin?
What's that?
Plow with it.
Uh, the plow is not with it, but there is money for the plow in that package.
And part of that, part of that number there?
We have $60,000 allocated and that price was 54.7. We were going to try to get the plow. I believe that's with the frame and some of the hydraulics. And then what we do is get a plow after that.
Can you use the old, the old plow from the prior truck?
No, I don't believe so. And I'd have to check with George for all the specifics on it. He's told me about three times and George is probably watching, but I, I don't think it fits for what it was there. The water department never had a one-ton truck. They always had a, like a 250 or a 350, but this is a much heavy-duty truck that can go for plowing. And if they say doing a water service or something, they can pull a small truck off to the side of the road instead of bringing a big truck and blocking a whole lane or a lane and a half.
Motion?
Move the Board of Selectmen award the contractor's supply a 2017 Dodge Ram 5500 one-ton truck to Central Jeep Chrysler Arena, Mass. in the amount not to exceed $54,790.
Second? Second by Mr. Danahue, further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous? And next is a discussion vote of replacement of 800 feet of plastic eight-inch water main to the booster station in the amount of $53,000.
The water line that goes from Old Oakham Bucket up to Walnut Tree Hill was put in in 2000. It was a plastic line. It's already broken a couple of times and we're having some problems with it. Back, say, about a month ago, we had brown water throughout most of the town. Part of that was from that water line breaking and it really causes a lot of disruption to the water system. So what we were looking to do is replace that with a ductile iron pipe and make repairs on that so we don't have the breaks that we've been having.
Where will that get paid?
That gets paid from the, there's an item in the water for water repla, water replacement pipe repairs.
Okay. How'd they get the plastic pipe in the first instance? Is that from planning?
Yeah, it was prior, 2000, there were no, plastic was allowed in the water regs. So it was a plastic pipe that was used and it's, it's been problematic for the water department.
Didn't we fix it with mitigation?
The $800,000, I don't, this might, is this the original part of Walnut Tree Hill?
No, the only thing that was fixed there was some of the runoff. Where the runoff ran down, the pipe wasn't addressed at all.
But in that same area, right?
It's in, it's in one of those areas, yes. If you're looking right off Old Oakham Bucket, up off to the left if you're going north, it's that area that was regraded and changed.
Is that where you showed me, the day we were doing the drive? You showed me that, the station up there?
I showed you the park, the station. It's the pipe from the station down to Old Oakham Bucket Road that's in, that's in disrepair. So we approached one of the contractors and they'd do it for the unit prices and replace the pipe and get it squared away, so.
So what does that mean? It's cracked?
It actually cracked, it broke. It's broken, I believe, four times now already since it's gone in. And the guys that opened the pipe up and did the repairs said it's not looking great. The pole pipe should be probably replaced.
Motion? Move the Board of Selectmen award the contractor to replace approximately 800 feet of plastic water main with eight-inch ductile iron from Old Oakham Bucket Road through the easement to the booster station to K R Resendez, Evasinet, Mass. for the amount not to exceed $53,000.
Second.
Second by Mr. Harris, further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
Excellent. What are they going to do then?
Not quite, not tomorrow, but I'm hoping, say, maybe in the next three to four weeks. They're finishing up now with their working. Once they're done, before the crew leaves, they will, they will go over and do that work. So that'll, that'll be nice because that's a headache waiting to happen. It was, we had a really, really bad time about a month ago, remember a lot of brown water.
Yeah, Kevin, you know, is there a way of like getting the public to know, like within a week or two, the street's going to be dug up because that's the next water line to deal with so that people have advanced notice as opposed to waking up and then finding sawhorses are put up and then a flagger's out there?
No, this is, this isn't the woods, on this project.
This is coming out of the woods and stuff.
No, I'm just talking in general, all the water. I mean, like, for example, you know, they've been jumping around. It's just, I know some people are complaining about Stockbridge not being able to get down near Kerry Litchfield. So is there any way of putting it on our website or just saying, the next two weeks, you know, they're going to complete this project over here, this is the next one?
We, we can do that when we're doing the main. The problem that they're doing now is some of these pipes they're testing out, so they might close down for a couple hours, the street, and they're jumping around. But we can, we can improve that if we're, we can try to get something out a little better or even get it posted on Facebook or do something to that effect.
Excuse me, I know the water department is going to increase, right now they're, the contractor's obligated to notify the residents 24 hours. And that's gotten shorter to now they do it at 2:00 in the afternoon.
No, but Sean, you might say, hey, look, we know that next week our Resendez is going to go out. We don't know if it's going to start Monday or Wednesday, but you know, it could be Friday. At least if you blast it saying, guess what, we're anticipating that it gets started next week. Be prepared. Instead of waiting 24 hours or 12 hours and then people are like, whoa, wait a minute, what am I going to?
You know, my work, Sean, is if we, if we do a weekly update and put it out on Fridays and do an email blast or something, where we're going to be working.
At least that would give some people heads up.
That might work a little better, so. So that's, that's something that we could do.
That's a good idea.
Everybody all set?
Yep.
Next, we have a discussion vote for New England Recycling to renew the contract at the transfer station for the handling of the construction and debris at $91 per ton.
So what we did is we've got a contract with NER. It's up for renewal, the contract's expiring, so we want to renew the contract. We still have a pretty good price. They're honoring the price that we awarded last year and we're up for continuing the contract.
So they're staying, they're staying the same as last year?
Saying the same as last year, there's no difference to it.
Okay, is that good, Sean?
Yes, yeah, and that's a good reliable source. I'd go down there for another town and, yeah, that's good.
No motion?
Motion?
Will the Board of Selectmen award a contract for providing disposal of construction and demolition debris to New England Recycling, otherwise known as NER of Taunton, Mass. for $91 per ton? Estimated contract amount, $218,000, $218,400.
Second.
Second by Mr. Harris, further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous?
Excellent.
Okay, and then we have an update on the Tilden Trail project.
Before we start the trail, there was a question what a VFD was. It's a variable frequency drive. So when the motor starts, it's not just like a switch that goes on full speed, it goes on at a graded level. So it doesn't just kick on, it's not on and off, it's on to the level it needs. So that's what, and it saves electricity because you're not running 100% all the time. If the flows are down, the pump can run at 20% without burning up that much electricity, so it's an energy saver.
Tony might wanna know that.
Just in case anybody wanna know.
Cause everyone's staring at me.
And as I said, we're always up for tours. Anybody wants to come to the sewer, sewer water treatment plan, it's a great talk. Sean can give the construction update. It is.
Construction update on Tilden Trail. I know the contractor's disappeared for about two weeks. He does take a week off around the 4th of July with his contractor and he did have some equipment problems about two weeks ago. He's expected to return back this week till it's completed. He's about two-thirds done now. He'll start up across, up near Willow. And I'm still dealing with National Grid to get them to sign off on the, I guess, the land purchase. We need, we had discussed with them obtaining an easement to run the trail on it and they weren't in favor of that. The property's also in Land Court. So we've had a consultant prepare a Land Court plan. We're just waiting for National Grid to write a memo as the owner of the property so that they're aware of what's going on, Land Court can move forward with that. So it'll broaden them. So this little delay may help us in the long run by the contractor. Like to keep him here and keep him moving on the next phase while he's here.
And the latest and greatest we heard from National Grid is we're hoping to receive all that information, everything, all lock, stock, and barrel this week, but...
So you think there'll be another week from National Grid, is that what you're saying?
Well, it's National Grid, but we're expecting, we were, we were told to expect it this week.
Okay. I was curious how long it would take for them to...
Where does it go from? I know where the, the, on the corner of Turner, going back to, it's not Chadwell, it's the little cul-de-sac there.
Willow.
Willow, okay. And then from, that's the strip that we're looking at from purchasing?
That's Phase Two, you could call that, correct.
Phase Two as in, Phase Two of, like, the second phase of the award and up to?
We couldn't award that, we have it as an add option, so we can award it, but we couldn't award it all because we don't own the land or have the easement yet. So hopefully that comes back and we can, we can complete the contract with the...
Next year?
It could even be this year. We'd like to do it if we had all the approval.
So going from Willow to Chadwell, there's a trail that was put in there by somebody in our room here, who's nodding his head, Mr. Majorclan, when he did Tilden Farm. Is that gonna be dealt with or is that just, is that gonna be left alone?
It will be replaced.
It is gonna be replaced?
Yeah.
Okay.
With the new standard of how the trail's being built today.
And we don't wanna jump, are we talking about the island?
Well, now I wanna go to the other end of the road. So there's probably a few people in the audience as well that have some questions. I've had several people come to me, including myself, noticing some issues with the change, if you will, because of the way the curb has swung way...
We're talking about Tilden and Beaver Dam?
Tilden and Beaver Dam, where the, where the island is. Whereas now it's just single vehicle only, so nobody has the ability to make a right turn. And it just happened on my way here again this evening, just to be able to, you'll never really hit the green light, you're always waiting for a second or a third light. And I'm just looking at the impact now. I also see possibility, and I know you've, you've tested, I talked to you earlier, Kevin, as far as the, the fire truck, but what concerns me is if an emergency vehicle comes down there, where do they go? Do they have to go on the other side of the island into oncoming traffic? Is there anything we can do at this point to, to move the curb back in where there is the room there? That's just a question that I have and I know, like I said, there's several people here that are probably gonna have a question. Is there anything we can do?
Well, the reason that was pulled in in the design of the trail was the intersection study that was done by a traffic engineer. Where the stop line is placed now and where that large throat, it does two things. To cross that intersection is very wide, so it brings the pedestrian travel closer. And second, by moving you up to the center island, your sight distance, I guess to the east, towards the harbor increases. Right now it doesn't meet...
The criteria by...
...sight distance standards for a 30 mile an hour roadway. Right now it's signalized.
Lights going or they staying?
Right now the lights are staying. We had a small traffic study and it's something we wanna look into in the future and making some improvements. The traffic study said we're eligible for a warrant to remove the traffic lights and go to a four-way stop sign if we wanted to go that. There'd be some reconfigurations of that intersection. That would be a cheaper alternative to replacing the lights, but one of the options is reconfiguring the intersection, putting lights back up and maybe putting, you know, loop detectors in and everything else to that effect so that it, when the car is waiting, it senses the cars there and then flips it over. We have some very old technology, so it's like two minutes on, two minutes off, two minutes on, two minutes off. So there's always a wait there, but that's an option with a smarter traffic light that can fall in, if that's the route we go, or a four-way stop.
Just seems, it seems to me, Kevin, there are two things that I see. First is, it exists elsewhere in town. You go down at the end of Cole Parkway, you can either go straight up Brook Street or take a left Front Street, or there's a right-hand lane that you can take a right on Front Street. Just seems to me that this intersection, which is very busy from that direction, a lot of people use it to gain access, that there should be a right-hand lane, take a right. And my only looking at it would be either you push the curbing back further to create that extra lane or you get rid of the island. Cause the island actually is probably the middle of the road, it's actually a little bit, it's actually the lane traveling on Tilden, they put an island there. So I'm like, it seems to me that one of two things have to go. Either the island goes or you gotta push it back because I think creates a huge bottleneck for people traveling. I just, from my, my standpoint, I don't, conceptually it looked great, but I'm saying right now, I don't see how a traffic engineer's gonna say, well, it increases safety. Maybe for that one little intersection, but if you go back, I mean, all intersections are huge, they're wide.
Right, but that, that doesn't make them, unfortunately, it doesn't make them right. I mean, it's...
I agree, but this is the one section, though, that everybody tends to use to drive. So if you're gonna bottleneck the other two, I'd say, great, do it. But why, why would you use the one that people use?
Because, and remember, that's, that's a CPC project. That wouldn't have been touched if, if the trail wasn't coming into it. But once it comes up, when we build it, it, it does have to comply with the safety standards for crossing the road and everything else. So is that something we could do in the future and reconfigure that whole intersection and make some improvements? Sure, that's something we can, we can definitely look into. And we can look into the island. Is there, is there anything in that island?
It's just flowers, there's a light.
I thought the traffic light's in the middle of the island, that's why you can't take the island out.
You gotta think about it, well, you can't. I think, I think the island goes. The island's actually in the middle of the road. The original road, it's on, if you, if you didn't have Beaver Dam, you'd have gone straight on Tilden. It's literally in the, the travel line heading towards Brook Street. That's where the island is. And then they added the additional area.
Right. The biggest issue with that, it was a CPC project and there's not a ton of money left over on that project. We might have to go back to CPC to address it. Or talk about it or see what we can do.
I mean, I, I'm not, again, I'm not, I'm not an engineer, I don't do granite.
Yep.
But to take and swing that granite back in is a major, major expense.
It'd be expensive and, and then we would want, as, as a town, we'd be concerned about it because we were already told by an engineering firm, a traffic engineer, that we should tighten that intersection up to provide the sight distance if, if something happened and there were accidents to that effect.
What's the history of the accident say? I love these people coming and changing our intersections. It just, a lot of times makes it worse. Go down Hollitt Street. And where you used to be able to go down Hollitt Street to get in the road, now you have to do a, you know, almost come to a stop and it's 90 degrees and it's, you know, I mean, the rotary. They said that was gonna work, it doesn't work too good for, you know, big trucks. It, it moves traffic a lot better.
So this is what's coming now and this...
I don't think that intersection was broken, so is the sidewalk going on the west side of Tilden Road, is that why this is bumped way out?
There's a light here.
Apparently there's a sidewalk on the east side by the red Newton Farm house. Right there. So that will get a bend in, that'll be taken out?
Oh, could that, that one have been widened? Because then you don't have the issue on that side of the street.
Then that would be, that would be the crossing point because you'd be able to cross. And that's one of the things they look at when they do the design for the intersection is how long it would take people to cross that roadway.
It just seems to me, I don't think it's broken, you know, and I realize one thing triggered another, but I'm just wondering if there were colds or something, you know, temporary, you know, what would, what would be the feeling of the residents, you know? Like these guys say, I've heard from a couple different people, you know, have never called me before, they heard this was coming on tonight and I've seen it and it's just, I just don't think it's really broken. It'd be nice if we could come up with a, like they said, you know, come September, a lot of people are gonna approach Beaver Dam Road and turn right to the gate school or to the high school.
It'd be a disaster. This is off-season right now.
Would it, would it be a help if the, if we did have, say, and, you know, we'll, we'll look obviously to the board for approval? You know, the other option is maybe a future four-way stop sign with a reconfiguration of the intersection or even, you know, putting in the loop detectors, it would sense when the cars are there and open the, open the intersection more so the light turns quicker and stays on more. Is that a...
Hopefully better than the one by the animal shelter. They sit there for a long time, turning left and we've had that discussion. I hate traffic lights, but you get used to it and it's there. And that's what this person said, it might be a four-way stop. I mean, then it's a race to the stop sign, who gets there first.
Right.
It's just my...
And what our, what our initial, our initial traffic study said we'd be eligible to go for a warrant to go back to the state and request a four-way stop sign, which would be, which would, we'd still have to reconfigure the intersection. If we do lights or we do four-way stop signs, we have to reconfigure that intersection.
The whole thing?
The whole thing.
Not just that?
The whole, the whole intersection. And would remove that, the lights that are out there now are eight-inch, they should be 12-inch. It's, it's all outdated and it's ancient, so there'd be a lot of things we'd have to do, but it's, it's something that we can look into definitely more and see what we can do to make improvements on it.
But if you had the four-way stop, then you can eliminate the island because the light's there now and that could let people queue potentially for the left-hand turn, which is really holding the traffic up. Right?
Potentially, but we'd still...
I don't think there'd be enough room for two lanes, there's still, you could squeeze by, but I don't think it...
Because the two streets don't match up. It's not like it's a straight. They're, they're way off there.
I don't know, Kevin, I, I've, I've looked at it. Right where the island is, it goes straight across. That's why I think the easiest relief would be to pull the island out, take a look at it. And then you'd have both going, able to go straight and take a left down to the harbor or you got the right. I'm dead serious.
I've noticed it too. It's in the center line.
Yeah, you can see it.
At the Brook Street end.
Yeah.
Looking where you're supposed to drive through, yeah. You're right.
And I think there's a light across the intersection, so even though you're losing the one in the island, frankly, that's kinda useless when you pull up to it.
You don't see it.
You don't see it. It's only for the people in the back, but I think there's at least one or two.
Before it used to be passed.
Yeah. We, we can, we can definitely revisit. As I said, it was, it was a CPC project and that's, that's what the conditions were put up by the engineering firm that was hired to look at it.
Any other comments?
I'm not blaming you.
No, no, I'm not, I'm not taking better for it.
The thought here is it's a problem, so I think we...
Yeah, no, we realize, that's all.
Sean, we talked about this, you brought that up months ago, didn't you?
At this intersection?
Yeah. Wasn't that the fire, didn't we have a problem with the fire truck making the turn?
Well, hopefully they answer John's concern.
No, we brought the fire truck and we bought a school bus out there before any curb was put in and had them all run it and they were all okay with it.
But if not, if there's a car at the stoplight, they're not going by it.
Oh, they can't get through?
No.
It's impossible.
Right? Cause I mean, I haven't seen it that close, but that's what I'm...
Anybody? I just wanna go, anybody in the audience have any comments or questions?
Chairman Dennis Martin, Amy Turner Road. I've been taking that right on red for 5,000 days now. And that is also the inventory route to South Shore Hospital, up Turner Road, left on Tilden, right on Beaver Dam. And if there's traffic backed up, the Amy's path, that ambulance is not getting through. And the sight lines are horrible coming around that corner. So I mean, the backups are unbelievable. You have my 15-year-old kid going, Gates, recognize the right way. Something has to be done because it's, that, it's unbelievable. You used to be able to take the right on red, deviate that traffic, but even tonight coming down here, I got stuck with one car on July 5th, so that, that is too wide, that curb is too wide. And you've got an ambulance coming down, it'll place the turn all over. Now with that eight-inch curb, he's coming down on that, on that big bend, that right-hand turn. And man, if you hit a truck or something else, it's gonna be a disaster. Eight, 10 weeks ago, it wasn't like that. It's just because of this construction.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can't we find out what the cost would be to adjust the plan that's in place now? Cause it sounds like you're talking about finishing it and coming back and correcting it and it makes more sense to me to correct it now.
And, and that's, that's definitely something we can do. What I, what I would ask to do is we'll bring the engineer out there, the, the design engineer, talk to him about it and see what the intent is and why. I just don't wanna fix or, or change something and make it, make worse of a problem that the town's liable for issues if we're, if we're not meeting any criteria as in, as in regard to handicap access across the road or, there's a couple issues. We'll bring the engineer out, we'll take a look at it and I can invite, I can tell the members of the board when we're gonna meet if anybody wants to come and express their concerns and we'll see what we can come up with for a solution.
The possible option, Kevin, I don't know, is, so if you took this curb and you moved it this way, you're talking about distance across? If you moved it this one this way, could this one, we have, we have the room over here since that's single lane traffic, we have the possibility, because that's a no right on, no turn on red coming from that direction.
But you're still stuck with the light there though, right? Is that, you're going the other side?
Yeah, you still have the light. What I'm saying is if you moved, there's a, there's a, I believe this is a trail or a sidewalk on this side, could that be adjusted over so your distance is pretty much equal as far as crossing? If they say, oh, it can only be, you know, 32 feet, is there a chance that we could move this side over and move that side back in? I'm just...
We'll take a look at anything, yeah, we'll take a look at everything.
I tell you right now, I don't, I'm not the person that comes and complains about things, but this is a problem.
Okay. There was, there was a reason for it, and I'd like to know the reasons before I, um, you know, give a solution. We'll look for a solution, we'll bring the engineer out, and as I said, we'll, we'll notify the board and we're going to do it. Um, anybody who wants to come out will gladly come out and we'll express their concerns, and we'll try to come up with a solution.
I just thought before they actually get the finished product done, if we could take a look at, you know...
I want to be, whenever it is. I want to know when it is. I'd like to go out.
Definitely.
All right.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We can do that.
Perfect. Thank you.
Is there any chance to move the trail back instead of ending, I, I don't know where your story is, but you know, move it back 60 feet and end it there instead of bringing it all the way down to the intersection?
Cross before the intersection.
Is that a possibility? And then you don't have to worry about the curb length and anything else like that?
And changing, maybe changing that part of the trail to the other side of the street? Because the idea is to get to the harbor anyway, right?
The sidewalk has to be HP accessible, so that means that sidewalk is even wider than you can think.
Oh, this...
And that's what's driving...
Right, but this, this one we're talking about is, it's got to be what, 10 or 12 feet?
And for the crosswalk, HP accessible to the light. That's what the project was. So, that's, might be part of the challenge in terms of the additional width, too, that we'll have to ask the engineer about.
Yeah, we'll bring the engineer out from record and see the reasons why, and as I said, you know, um, anybody who wants to come, we can express their concerns and go forward with it, so.
Well, thank you.
Because there's no...
Appreciate it.
No problem.
Okay, let me just see here. We got to go back. Yep. We're going to go back to the Riva Restaurant.
Thank you very much.
For discussion vote.
Thanks, Sean.
Thanks, Sean.
For 8:516 for a band on the patio from 6:00 to 10:00 P.M. Nobody knows who you are, so you have to give your name.
Michael, Riva Restaurant. Hi, Mike. How you doing? Good evening. So, we're looking for, um, just permission to, um, use the patio, have a full band on the patio from 6:00 to 10:00. I mean, we have a, uh, entertainment license out there. We just, you know, we let 27 of Butters know. We sent them a letter. Um, and here we are. Here I am.
Oh, like acoustic or?
No.
No, this is a band.
What this is, is, this is the Friday night kickoff.
This is Heritage Days?
Heritage Days.
Trying not to call it Heritage Days, but yeah.
Right, but it's the kickoff.
It's the Friday night of it, yeah.
It's the Friday night kickoff of the actual music that begins on Saturday.
From noon time to 8:00, Mike?
Uh, no, it's going to be from 6:00 to 10:00.
6:00 to 10:00.
On the patio.
Oh.
Oh, I see you. So, the application said with acoustic guitar and slight amplification. Is that what the boards approved in the past?
No, we haven't allowed amplification in the past, but I think...
I think this is one time.
I think on that side of the building, it's just going to, you're going to be playing a...
To Front Street for the most part.
Driftway.
This is at Riva.
Oh, we're talking to Riva?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was thinking of...
This is in the, um...
This is in the patio.
Right.
So, it's kind of like how the high school musical band sets up, and, you know, we've done it before, and we don't plan on blowing anyone out of the water. It's just...
Right.
What was some of the feedback, Mike, from your neighbors?
All good. I mean, we're, we're, you know, have a transparent relationship with them. You know, we let them all know everything, and we haven't done a lot of music at Riva this year. So, we've kind of, you know, pulled back a little bit and, uh, you know, a little bit more music happening at Rivershed and a little less at Riva, and we thought this would be kind of a cool, fun thing to start off the weekend. I know they're really excited about it.
It's going to be next to the movie theater?
Yeah. Um, no, so it would be right in, you know, Keely Silverstorm?
Yeah.
So, it would be right in front of them.
Right there, on that side.
Playing out to Front Street.
And you've talked to the condo owners?
Yeah, yeah. We'd send them, uh, they each got a letter.
Yeah. Is there anybody here that, any of Butters here at all in the audience?
I don't have a problem.
I have no problem at all.
See how it goes. It's first time, one time. So, they start up the...
This is that weekend?
Heritage Day weekend. I mean, it was successful two weeks ago at the, um, Bandshell, I think it was, when they had music outdoors. Um, they did it during First, um, First Friday, and I think, was it in June? No, May.
Yeah. We've actually, we've actually done this in the past way back. We did it actually up at St. Mary's.
We're actually technically calling it First Friday.
Right.
You know, since it is First Friday of August. Try to kind of stay away from the whole Heritage Day's riffraff.
Got you.
You know, kind of keep it separate.
Okay. Motion.
No problem.
Moved a grand outdoor entertainment permit to Riva Restaurant located at 116 Front Street, Situate, Mass. on Friday, August 5th, 2016, from 6:00 P.M. until 10:00 P.M.
Second.
Second by Mr. Harris. Further discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
All right.
Okay, let me see, make sure I didn't miss anything here. I think we've done it all right. Okay, so I think we're going to move on to discuss, discuss and interview some new board committee applicants. The first is Council on Aging. Let me just find my little cheat sheet here. Betty Johnson. Come on up, Betty. Just give name and address for everybody, if you would.
Betty Johnson, 40 Allen Place.
How are you? Just tell us a little bit about yourself and why you want to get on the board.
I'm an occupational health nurse. I have considerable experience with, um, case management. I've been involved with seniors for a long before I became one, and, um, probably the last six to eight years, I've been very involved with the senior center here in Situate, as well as the Friends of Situate seniors. I think I have a lot to bring.
Have you been to the meeting? Have you been to some of the meetings?
I have.
She's at, she's at most of the meetings, yeah.
I know, she's at D V, but just so people get a sense. She's already very active in it. Know all the players.
Great.
Do you have an opinion where the senior center should go?
I'd like to see it by the library, but as long as we have a freestanding center, that's key.
Why?
Why? Because we have a lot of seniors and we need a lot of space for a lot of activities, and we're going to have more and more every year.
So, is it space or freestanding that you feel strongly about?
I'm talking about both.
I'm asking which one of the two?
Which is more important? I don't know which is more important. Space? I suppose space is most important. Mm-hmm.
Great. Anybody else? I agree. No.
All right. Well, thank you.
Good. Thanks.
Helen Gilbonsky, is she here yet? We're a little bit early. Uh, anybody else here for the Council on Aging? Oh, Maureen, come on up. Maureen Dinsmore.
Am I right with this three openings, six applicants? Is that correct?
That's correct, yes. Maureen, just your name and address for the, for everybody.
Maureen Dinsmore, 40 Driftway.
So, tell us a little bit again why you would like to get on the Council on Aging Board.
Well, I've been in town for 16 years now, and I've come from towns with wonderful senior programs and lovely senior buildings, and I'd like to see what I could do to try to get this off-the-back burner, and let's put it on the front burner, and let's get some space. More, more space, more programs, more seniors can enjoy what we have to offer.
So, I just had a question. Um, I, I mean, I understand, and believe me, the importance of the senior center is huge with me, but there's more involved with the Council on Aging, a lot more involved than there is...
Absolutely.
Than just the, so is there anything you want to, like to add to that at all?
Um, I just feel that there, there's always room for improvement, no matter what, how good it is that you've got.
Right.
And I really feel there's so many more programs out there that are offered by other towns.
Right.
And I don't know the reason, but I fear that it could be because of a space issue.
Space, yeah, certainly.
Yeah.
Okay.
What other towns, um, are you referring, have you, have you been involved in?
Um, I've lived, I lived in Duxbury for 16 years previous, and I lived in several towns in New York prior to that.
Were you involved at all in their, in their senior center?
Uh, not at that time because I was working. Now I'm retired six years and...
And you, you were also a gerontology nurse, correct?
No, I'm not.
Oh, no, but I retired.
Retired.
Yeah.
I'm not, I'm not a nurse.
Oh.
No, Betty, she was a, Betty was a nurse.
Oh, I'm on Helen.
Yeah, that's right. Sorry, yeah, we have, Helen actually just came in, so.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. I've just been involved in a lot of community activities here in town, you know, doing fundraising and...
Yes, you have. Absolutely.
I just like...
No.
No.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you, Maureen. Helen Gilbonsky.
That's mine.
Come, come on up. Just your name and address, Helen.
Yeah, Helen Gilbonsky, 166 Joe, Oklahoma.
So, if you could tell us a little bit about why you'd like to get on the Council on Aging Board?
Well, I'm a senior. I'd like to see a senior center built. Uh, I have 30 years of nursing experience.
Yes.
Out of that, maybe 15 years in geriatric nursing. Uh, I know what, uh, the aging process is. I know how it's important to keep the elderly active, socialized, and everything else. So, I guess it's a nursing meeting that's coming out.
Right.
So, I heard there was a, uh, space, and so I'd like to be a part of it.
Excellent.
I like what they're doing now, but I think we could expand so we get more services. And, uh, so I'm willing to give up my time, you know, to help the cause.
Well, I certainly know you well enough to know your energy level's incredible, so I don't question any of that, so. But any, anybody, Tony?
Just that idea, I mean, I think space really limits what we can do right now.
Yeah.
Which is why we're going through this whole, um...
Yeah.
Exercise, trying to find, what service, if you had to pick one service that you think we're missing right now, what would you say, what would you?
What kind of service?
Yeah, just one that comes to right the topic.
It's missing, actually.
I'm a nurse. I'm a helper. I'm a, I want to help. I want to guide some of these people that I know have the knowledge, that some of these elderly people really need help.
No, what, yeah, what I meant was, what do we not do? What's like one thing right now that you think we should do?
What you're not doing? Oh, build a senior center.
Marty mentioned that last time. We're trying to build a senior center, but there's a lot more to be in on the Council on Aging than just building a senior center.
Well, I'm new to this. I mean, I don't know what it encompasses. I'm willing to volunteer my time. I am busy, and, uh, so I'm willing to volunteer my time, but if it's a waste of time, then I'll volunteer.
Oh, we don't want, want it to be a waste of time, obviously.
Well, going to be, right, right. So, I mean, you know...
So, um, what type of skill sets? Did you have all that background, which is terrific? Can you help us? Because we have a lot of applicants, so we need to work through and put the right one on.
Yeah.
So, can you help us identify, um, you said you're very busy, so you're very active. Do you think you'd be able to put time in to help the Council on Aging bring some of these, um, other areas that you think are missing?
I think so. I think so, yeah. I know, uh, like I said, I've been a senior for a long time, and I know how important it is to be busy, to be active, uh, and, and have a place all together. Uh, and so I think I can offer something. Do you think so? No, let me go.
I can speak firsthand. I've known Helen for 15 years, and when she says she will get involved, she gets involved.
Does it?
She's very active.
That's what we're looking for, doers.
She has a, I say not a lot of time, because she's very busy with a lot of things, but if she says she's going to get involved with Council on Aging, she will do it. And I can tell you right now, she has the best pierogies I've ever tasted, so, long and short of it, um, she'd be, she'd be an asset.
That gets you every time.
She'd be an asset. I can tell you that, you know.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else for, here for the Council on Aging?
Oh, excuse me? Leslie James?
Come on up, Leslie. Just your name and address again, Leslie, if you would.
Leslie James, 600 Habley Road.
Thank you. Again, just an idea of like what, you know, some of the things that you, your qualifications, a little bit, and some others that you want to get involved?
I retired about a year and a half ago. I was in, um, retail management most of my life, and, um, so my first experience with the senior center was after I retired. And, um, I think they're doing a marvelous job with the building that they have. And I think the biggest problem with the building is it's hard to do multiple things at the same time. If someone's having a meeting, anyone who walks in the door is sort of intruding. It's, there's just, there's no separateness, there's no privacy. So, it's hard to get multiple things off the ground.
I definitely, I definitely agree with that part. I mean, I'm the liaison, so I've walked through literally ladies doing classes and stuff. I understand that.
Exactly, exactly. Um, and I think they have ideas for lots more things, programs that they want to be doing, but they're somewhat limited.
Right.
Um, I should also say I've volunteered at the Situate Animal Shelter for 20 years. Um, what else do you need to know?
Um, no, I mean, I guess I could ask you what I asked the previous applicant. Is there something that stands out in terms of services that you think we really should be focusing on right now?
Um, in terms of, of, um, programs that they're offering to seniors, I don't really know enough about it to know what they're missing. Um, I've enjoyed the programs that I've participated in. Um, and you asked about, um, a freestanding buil, building, or I think the most important thing about the building is that it needs to be accessible. And I think, you know, that's part of the problem with the current building. Um, parking's tough, you know?
Yeah.
Those kinds of things.
So, as a retail executive, you've, you've had the opportunity to, uh, manage your time, bounce a lot of things, a lot of different priorities.
Yep.
I was in retail for 11 years, so I can relate. Um, what, what type of that business acumen do you think you can bring to the board? Because we get a lot of folks that are retired nurses. They, they have a lot of social work, um, background, and you have a nice business background, which I always think it's nice to have a mixture of, uh, skill set on our committees.
Yep. Um, I think, um, I'm organized. Um, I'm also, I, I show up for things.
That's good.
And I just think that you, you, um, you tend to sort of distill the essence of what the problem is and what the potential solutions are.
Mm-hmm. Great. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I was just going to ask, what, what are your thoughts on future senior center? You know, I, would, like what Mara said, with your background in retail, you know, you might, you're looking at it from a little different, you know, freestanding, um, you know, and when? I, I was looking to see how long you've been in Situate. No one's asked, you know, we all realize it's a long...
Oh, most of my life.
All right.
First as a summer resident and then full-time. I actually graduated from Situate High School.
All right, perfect. Okay, so I'll ask you this question, really put you on the spot. When do you think the town would have the, based on what we have going on, when do you think the town would be ready? We all agree it's, you know, it's a nine under square block facility or something like that. Everything's tough about it. When do you think the town would be ready to go forward and have it pass? What are your thoughts from, you know...
I, I haven't studied the issues and the financing of it enough to have an answer for you.
Okay.
Um, but I think your population is aging.
Right.
I mean, the seniors are a bigger and bigger and bigger percentage of the town population all the time. And, um, you know, as someone else said, the most important thing is keeping people active and keeping them interested and having a, an enjoyable place for them to go to that they feel comfortable in. And I think you could, um, you could really expand things the sooner you get them somewhere like that.
Right, around the town, okay. Great.
Well, thank you very much.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Janice, or... Janice? Is Ms. Pollard here?
Uh, my name is Janice Desmond. I live at, uh, 7 Edith Homes Drive, the evening.
Good evening.
Um, so, this is my first time I've applied for a position, um, on a board, and I'm interested in Council on Aging because I'm aging. Um, I'm worked today, but I'm going to be retiring in the next year or two, and I think I have, um, some, a background that would be, um, helpful in this type of, uh, I know there's a lot of things that are going on. There's some thoughts of building. There's some thoughts of building reuse. Um, I, I would imagine with such a small building, there's some limitations on services that can be offered. Um, so I'd like to, um, if I had the opportunity to do this, really dig in, understand what's going on, what could be offered, what makes fiscal sense. Um, I'm a CPA. I work in investment industry, and I'm the treasurer and CFO of our funds. I think I have a background that could assist and maybe augment some of the terrific sounding people I just heard come up here.
Excellent.
So, you've been a CPA for most of your career?
Um, well, this is a second career for me. Over 25 years. I was a, actually a social worker when I started out. Yeah.
It's a nice...
How long have you lived in Situate?
Uh, 38 years.
38 years. So, you're familiar with the senior center and...
Um, I know where it is.
It's easy to drive by.
It, it's a little sad.
Yeah.
Say the least.
No, I'm very content. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
No, thank you.
Thanks for volunteering.
Everybody else got a question. I don't get a question.
We can't do everybody on their feet right now.
I have a question for you. All right, all right, since you asked, okay. Um, there are three spots, and everyone, I'd put every single person on.
Right.
So, if you don't get, is there any other committee commission that you'd be interested in?
You know, and one hasn't jumped out at me. I mean, I'd like to be on this, and I mean, I'd certainly entertain the thought of, of something else, because I'd like to do some volunteer work, you know, in the town that I've lived in for such a long time and plan to retire. Yeah, so I would consider that, yeah.
I actually thought the same thing because of the CPA, your CPA background. There might be some really neat things if, you know...
So, we could point her later on tonight if she's not here.
Right.
Do you think there'll be a time issue with you still working? And, because some of the programming and stuff happens during the day as opposed to in meetings or...
Daytime would be a little hard for me now, but I, you know, as I said, I'm retiring in the next year, maximum two.
Right.
Um, I have some, a lot of flexibility in my position and, you know, could certainly make it work.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Is Ms. Pollard here? Lena Pollard? Oh, she's not, okay. Okay, we move on to the Situate Cultural Council, Sarah Smith. How are you, Sarah?
Good, thanks.
Good thanks.
Yeah, nice to see you.
Sarah Smith.
Just name and address.
Sarah Smith. I live at 47 First Parish Road. And I'm being considered, hopefully, for the cultural council. And I...we've lived here for 14 years. But my professional background has been working in cultural institutions. I worked at the De Cordova Museum and Sculpture Park before we actually were living here. And the commute got to me, so I had to stop working there. But I've also worked at galleries on Newberry Street previous to that. And now, since we've moved to Situate, I'm a professional graphic designer. My volunteering in the town has really focused in the schools mainly. And my...both kids were at Jenkins. I have...my son's going to Gates next year. But this opportunity came up where I felt like I could branch out into the town and really kind of go back to my roots and kind of go back to really what I've loved and been passionate about.
Right.
That's awesome. It's nice to have folks that have that amount of artistic ability really come in and try to volunteer and give that, you know, worth that you have back to the town. Instead of...we all tend to go where our kids go and try to help what they're doing.
Right, yep.
Really will be able to utilize your skill and strengths.
Yes, and just, you know, branching out to the entire population of the town, too. Interests me.
Tricia, how often do they meet this, the Situate Cultural?
They get...you sort of review the applications. It's mostly in the fall.
Yes.
It's sort of a flurry of activity.
Yep.
So I know Sarah, and she would be an asset to the Situate Cultural Council. I also said that she should consider getting on the Situate Cultural District.
Yeah, we did talk about that.
Because of your background. And I can tell you right now, you'll get on, you should get on. I'll vote for you. But I'm like, you'll be an asset for it, so.
And I know Sarah as well. She's...it seems like a perfect fit with your background.
Yes, it is, right.
I've seen all the hard work and dedication you've done in the schools over the years.
Thanks.
So I think you'd be a great part of the team.
Thank you.
No questions? Nope. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks.
Hi, I'm Robin Glitch, 26 Persoon Drive. I'm on the cultural council. I think Juliana Donnie had contacted maybe you. We currently have not met our core core. We have to have a minimum of five. We currently have four because there were three people whose second terms ended this year, not two. So we sent out a press release, and as far as I know, I think Sarah is maybe the only one who's responded with an application to you. Perhaps, or I think...
We actually have one other.
We have another one.
So if you could keep that in mind.
And I think we may have gotten another one in today, which was late, but we...I think we did get another one in today, didn't we, Michelle? Was it? Yeah.
Too late, I believe, but we do have...
Right.
We have six, so we have a crucial one. We'd like to have, if possible, if anybody responds.
Certainly.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, is Sue...
Sue Gallagher?
Sue Gallagher? Sue...
Does anybody...do you think she's outside? Is there anyone outside? The Heritage Day spokesman? Oh, okay.
There's a couple people outside.
Okay.
Gallagher? Sue Gallagher?
Thank you. Thanks for checking.
All right. Okay.
Situate Beach?
Actually...it is a little bit out of order here. Situate Beach Commission.
Tom Hall's here.
Okay, but I'm trying to go by the agenda, which is a little difficult.
Situate Beach?
Yes. Situate Beach, where is...
Jay Murray? Mr. Murray here?
Where'd you find that, John?
That's Tab 36.
You're writing a book, you're...
Oh, no, but I get my...it's not working very good, huh?
Add them up, buddy.
Yeah.
Just go to Tom Hall.
Oh, yeah, it's...yeah, it's different. On the agenda, this is different.
Or is that a list of this one?
It's different, yeah. Let me see, hold on one second.
Next one is Coastal Advisory Commission, Tab 37.
Yep, I guess that's what we'll have to do. So Tom Hall?
Just your name and address, sir. How you doing?
Tom Hall, 59 Dreamwald Road.
Oh, you? Just a little bit about your background. I mean, we have your information. I'd just like to...
Okay, I run a management consulting firm that does a lot of acquisition integration work. I'm a lifelong resident, lifelong member of the Boat Club Historical Society.
Okay. So why do you want to get involved in this?
Well, I mean, these are big issues, right? This is a...these are huge. And I think I can help, and I want to do my part. I, as I said, I'm a boater. I'm born and raised in Situate. I'm a trustee on the Historical Society, so I can represent some of those constituencies and also provide some experience from my background in terms of budgeting and management leadership, things like that.
Okay. Great. Have you been to some of the meetings that have popped up?
I have not been. But I have read the reports and I've read all the minutes. That recent report was pretty lengthy, 120 pages or so. But I thought it was excellent and really laid out the issues. And, I mean, they're laid out, but the decisions have to be made. Nurishment versus seawalls versus letting it happen. I mean, there's a lot of issues and not unlimited funds. So if we can help advise in that area, that's why I'm doing it.
Great.
Just a quick question. I've known Tommy for...since high school. Tommy, would you want to give up what you're currently on, what now?
I'm a trustee with the Situate Historical Society.
Can you do both?
Oh, yeah. I mean, it's a great group, and it's led by Dave Ball. You guys know Dave. And, yes, I can do both.
Great.
Tom, can you share some of your...you have a lot of experience with strategy and communication because this is a new commission. They've got a lot of new information and really trying to work in conjunction with Nancy Durfee, our coastal resource officer, and also Kevin, our DPW director. It needs some gelling and some guidance. We've got a...there are a lot of great people on it. Can you share with us a little bit your experience doing those sorts of things?
Okay. So, you know, I've done a lot of that work mostly in, you know, packaged goods companies like Procter &amp; Gamble or Bayer Store, which is a big German company. My own firm is called Brand Works, which I started 10 years ago. We do, as I said, a lot of integration work and strategy work. And the last two big projects have been a big expansion of a business school in Boston, which was a two-year build-out and tripling of the student body. Prior to that, I put together a shrimp farm acquisition in South Texas. So a little bit of aquaculture. But in all those cases, I mean, it's...they follow the same format. You have to figure out your, you know, the vision in somewhat textbook fashion. The vision, the resources you have, what you're going to try to do. Try to make some decisions that balance off the resources with trying to do the right thing. And the communication aspect, more mentioned, is hugely important, particularly in a town like this. I mean, everyone's nervous about this stuff, right? Whether it's the FEMA issue or just seeing the crumbling seawalls. I mean, a lot of people are nervous about this. So there would be not only a, you know, process and a management function to get down the line and budgeting and all that good stuff and laying out the, you know, the stream of activity of the next three or four years, but I'm sure there's going to be a communications process so the town feels like this advisory committee is going to represent us and balance everything off, and we know what's going on. So in my experience, it's not just the sort of the strategy work and the analysis, but the communication to make everybody feel, you know, comfortable with what's going on.
Thank you.
Excellent. Anything else, John?
No, for me? No, thank you.
Thank you, Sean.
Thanks, Tom.
Thanks very much. All right. Just gonna give one more shot here. It was Jay, 36, right? So Jay Murray is not here? Okay, we're just gonna go by that, then. So Coastal, that was the only invited. So is Gary Meyerson here?
Yes, sir.
Come up, Gary. Just your name and address, if you would.
Gary Meyerson, 26 Summer Street.
Tell us a little bit why you would like to be on CPC.
Going back, I've been involved mostly with the schools and various committees and UCenter. I've been on UCenter board for 13 years, as well as Situate softball. So I find that I'm always at CPC meetings, either involved with the schools or involved with sports. I live on the West End, so a lot of times I'm there for issues involving open space out in the West End. So I'm at enough meetings that it's about time I maybe just get on the board. I get called from...sometimes from the members to ask me questions, in particular about financing of some of the items because of my financing background. And so I figured I would just volunteer.
Yeah, tell us a little bit more about your actual background, your professional background.
Sure. I'm currently a bond arbitrage trader. I have my own firm. I was managing director for Niko Solomon-Smith Barney, Solomon-Smith Barney, Citigroup. I was head bond trader for Morgan Stanley and Morgan Stanley Japan. Prior to that, I was an accountant for Payne Weber doing arbitrage accounting. Before that, I owned a farm. So...
I'd still leave the farm.
Yeah. And I...well, that was a long time ago. And I still own part of that property, and it's all in hardwood now. So I have that type of experience as well.
Are there any areas of CPC that you find most interesting to you right now?
I think a lot of the issues with how we're using some of the open space, I think, are most interesting. If we're using it for trails, are we using it for fields? Are we using it for, you know, schools, whatever it be? And how we're dividing that up, you know? And what's legally allowed and what's discretionarily allowed? And what should the town really be doing with those, with these various properties? I'd also like to see more done with affordable housing because that seems to be a little, you know, a little backed up, to say the least. And so, you know, those are the areas I think that I find most interesting.
No, I've known Gary for years, and I think he'd be a great asset. We've got a lot of applicants that are great assets, though, so it's gonna be an interesting evening.
That's fine. That's fine.
John, up you go.
No.
Well, thank you, Gary.
Sure.
Gary, thanks.
Thank you.
Interviewed, okay. So I guess John Bullman? Hey, John, just come up and give us your name and address again, if you would.
Sure. John Bullman, 72 Old Forge Road.
A little bit about why you want to go on CPC and a little maybe of your background.
Sure. My family moved to Situate probably 40 years ago. I've lived in Situate probably 30 of those 40 years. I took a little hiatus and lived in Boston. I was a CPA for 15 years. Got out of law school in '87, so I've been an attorney for almost 30 years. I served on CPC previously for, I believe it was six years because I think I was termed out, and I've taken a probably three, four, five-year hiatus. It goes by very quickly. I'm very familiar with the Act and what it allows, what it doesn't allow. I've worked with Cantwell and the Coalition in trying to get modifications to the Act, and I think that's sort of an ongoing thing that has to happen as we run out of open space or things we can do with money. We need to modify it so not just Situate, but other towns will still invest in CPC. We need more flexibility to do things that we may want to do, but the Act doesn't allow us to do. And I think now we need to watch that. I mean, we're all familiar with things that have gone on in, you know, other towns that they've gotten in trouble with CPC, so I think we need to protect it. But then we need to try and modify it to get that flexibility, to be able to do it and do it legally. So again, I have the time. I know what it takes. You know, I believe in it, and I like doing it, so.
John?
Yeah.
I mean, John, you were chair for how many years? Of your six years on there, probably at least half of them.
Yeah, more than half. Everybody stepped back, kind of, when they elect chairman. It's just sort of, yeah.
John, in my opinion, you kind of took it to the next level in terms of understanding everything that was going on, organizing it and doing that sort of thing. I thought you did a great job.
Thank you.
You know, I think you understand it better than most. And I think it does need a, you know, proponent out there to get it, to get the legislations to move in ways that the money can be more useful. Is there a reason why you left? Was it just because you termed out?
It was termed out, but it was also sort of, when you lose a little bit of energy and you kind of...I mean, I think I was termed out as much as I had done the six years. I mean, I'm sure that I might have been able to get a waiver, but I was kind of...I didn't have the same energy that when I started, so I thought it was fair to sort of let some other people take some time and, you know, take it to another level. And now the kids are a little older. I get a little more time. It's, you know, I'm not running to as many soccer games and baseball games and that kind of thing. So, you know.
So of the buckets that we spend money on, is there anyone that you think that the town is most needy of or...
I think there probably needs to be a lot more flexibility in recreation. I mean, I think it's too restrictive. And I think you have to do that with Cantwell and with the Coalition. And Situate's not the only one in that...I mean, we must been in a situation where they don't have open space that they can acquire. I mean, Cambridge was buying land in Arlington. I mean, so some more flexibility probably in the recreation, and that flexibility translates to the general fund because you know we're only...the general fund is 60% of it that we can spend on any one of those disciplines. So, you know, I still believe affordable housing, the best place is the Affordable Housing Trust, where you have members...it's a complicated issue, and it should be kind of the reason we created it, was so that they could focus on that, you know, because it's a pretty complex issue. So I still believe in the Affordable Housing Trust to do that, so.
Sean?
You just touched on exactly...John knew it when he struck the turf with the...you know, your hands were tied when you first were chairman or you're first involved. You know, you couldn't remodel a field, you know, rebuild a field. And now the latest thing is, you know, over at REC being liaison to REC, you know, recreations and water, you know, being on the water, you know, that's part of our recreation. So I like what you're saying and, you know, just kind of look at it from a different angle. I think what you're saying, John, you know, you were here, spent a lot of time on the water yourself, so...
And believe me, I ran into Mrs. Glancy outside when we were voting. I said, "Look, and I believe in the boats and the boating programs, and I want my kids to go to them, and I would love to pay for them, but I don't want to have it so that somebody can, you know, will have citizens that..." You know, there've been challenges in the past that I've had to deal with.
Right.
And I want to be able to look them square in the eye and say, "No, no, this is legal." And there's a way to do that. And the Coalition's very active in helping us do that, and other towns support it because, you know, Falmouth wanted to do similar things. I mean, you know, so you do it, you know, you do it that way. And there's...it happens. It may take a year or two longer than you, you know...I mean, the field stuff and the lights for the fields, it took a while.
Yeah. The answer was no years ago, and now that, you know...
Yeah. So in that flexibility, everybody's running out of things to do, whether it be with, you know, open space or recreation. They've done all the things within those constraints, so now we need to be able to...you know, you could never do new fields. You could, you know...I mean, I still don't necessarily believe in the no turf rule kind of thing. So, you know, I think it's flexibility that you need to...but you need to do it the right way, not by sort of just hoping nobody challenges it.
I'm surprised with...there are some areas down on the Cape that have adopted CPC, and I'm just surprised that there's just...we learned of this now, you know?
There are areas that...but I mean, I sat in...we were at Stone Hill College. They had like a chairman's thing, the Coalition ran. And there were towns that knew they were doing it. They knew it was illegal, but they were just like, "We're doing it anyway." And, you know, I mean, there were towns that paid for canoes and things way back when. I mean, so...
Well, we want to do it right. And I went on...at advisory, I always relied on your advice, John. I always thought you were very objective, and I think you will remain to be that way. That's how I always appreciated it. I thought you really handled that whole...the budget and the CPC and the allocation really well.
Thank you. Well, that was the sort of CPA thing, let you do those crazy spreadsheets and try and figure it out.
I always appreciate that.
It gets a little overwhelming, but...
And the only thing I just want to actually, it's a good opportunity to say, is, you know, part of our job here is balancing those that have been dedicating hours to us for years to those folks that come in that are new that want to start volunteering. So it's a balance to try to honor those that have been putting their time in, but also giving people an opportunity, new people an opportunity. So I think in all the committees that we're going to look at tonight, there's some of that balancing that's going to go on. But I would certainly welcome you back.
Understood. Thank you.
Say?
Thanks, John. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Kathleen Donahue?
Hi.
Well, you're just your name and address, if you would.
I'm sorry?
Just name and address.
Kathy Donahue, Cushing Landing. My background, I think a lot of you know, I was...I've been on the North and South River Watershed, the Situate Guard Club, the advisory committee, the beautification. I ran the Red Cross swimming lessons for 14 years before they were taken over by the REC department. So I've had a fairly broad background on community issues with this. And my thoughts are that I'd like to think that there's three phases, that looking forward, that the CPC looks forward to things that need to be thought of down the road. A little bit more long-range planning than maybe we've been able to do recently. And look at some of the projects that are really going to impact the town. Say like we need open space for, say, we're tight on water resource. We're really got to look at that and how we can do that now and work along the way. And say housing, I think everybody is terribly concerned. We've got the money for housing. We just haven't been able to get the buildings in place. And that's very important as a defense for the 40B people that have just been...caused such chaos to the community, you know, because we haven't been able to defend ourselves. And then for things, I'd like to think, say, for the historical things, in 30 years from now, I'd like to think that the town made the right votes to preserve the things that are really important, so that, you know, so we're looking back and saying, "That was a good decision. We protected that." So I think it all involves a lot of things about the money, using the money wisely now that really can get the longest impact to the community.
Laura?
Kathleen, there's, there are like six, and I don't need to ask you a lot of questions because I know you have the great credentials. Are there any other committees, because you have been on the Watershed Committees?
Watershed isn't a town committee. It's a regional.
I know it's not, but you are the North River Watershed Committee. My question for you is, do you have any interest in water resources? If, are there any other committees that you would also be interested that have sort of that same concern, if you were?
I like the broad vision that CPC has.
Okay. You like the broader, just not just water.
Right. I think I've done a lot of, done a lot of water.
Sean?
No, no questions.
I'm a townie.
I know you are. So I served with Kathy on advisory for...
Six years.
Six years, however many it was. I can vouch for dedication, her knowledge of the town stuff, and really just the background of the town, having lived in it for years. You know, I guess my question is in terms of CPC, because we used to review all these projects from advisory, and you talked about the long-term, what do you think, what do you think the town should focus on in the long-term? You mentioned almost every category.
Right.
You know, what, I mean, some people think we bought a lot of open space already, some people think they should go build more ball fields.
Yeah.
Some people, you know, then we throw in historical stuff when we need it.
Right.
You know, what's your, what's your sense on that?
I think that the formula is pretty, pretty well set for us, but I think, as John said, there's a lot of room for, say, looking forward a little bit more. What I'd like to just see is more long-range planning from the CPC, and that would involve more communication, say, talking to the different entities and saying, "Okay, what do we need to do for open space, say, water protection?" And that would make talking to water resource, talking to the DPW Water Division, talking to the different parties and see if we can use that CPC, CPA money more wisely. And that would have a longer-term goal. And that's the same thing, say like Historical Society, at some point down the road, Lawson Tower is going to be, need to be reshingled. We need to sort of know that 10 years ahead, so we can start sort of putting things aside. And this is, as we know, with our finances and the town, this is the only pocket we really have that we can take care of some of these big projects that aren't dramatic. So that's my thinking on those.
So how do you deal, and I think you're right on, but how do you deal with it? Because I think the committee's been acting more along of, you come, if you meet the qualifications, you get the money.
Right.
And, you know, and over the years, we've kind of said, "Okay, well, let's start thinking long-term. How do we save money for, you mentioned water protection and some of these other things." And I don't know that that's the way that it's been working. I don't know that that's the mindset of the town. I think somebody comes in, they can buy a piece of land, we buy a piece of land because they meet the criteria.
Right.
What are your thoughts on how we're going to do that?
I think it's, I think it's important for the committee to reach out and communicate with the different departments or the entities. And say to Historical Society, "Give us, you know, give us a 10-year plan and see what you think. What are the big things down the road?" Or, you know, say, we mentioned water resource. I think it's the committee's job to get out, and a lot of people aren't aware, they think that, you know, they get, they get an allocation in November, they decide by January, and it's done at the Springtown meeting, and it's all over. And I think maybe that's, we have to sort of get the information out to people a little bit better, so that we can, so the projects we get have a little bit longer impact.
Do you think you'd be able to say no to somebody, even though they have a good project? And, but, and it did meet the criteria, but it really isn't part of what our long-term plan is, you know? We're really trying to work on X, Y, or Z, and although it'd be nice to have a handball court over there.
Yeah. Well, I think if, I think if the committee is working with the, with the group and seeing, you know, this is the way the game needs to be played, we've got to look at the big picture as opposed to this, the handball court in Tony's backyard. Yeah. Not to imply.
And I don't want to, I wish I asked John these questions and Gary, so I hope you don't think I pick on you.
Okay.
That's all I.
Okay.
Thank you, Kathleen.
Okay, good.
Colleen Burke? Colleen Burke, no. Lisa Fenton? Come on up, Lisa, just your name and address.
Hi, Lisa Fenton, 25 Crescent Ave.
How are you tonight?
Good, thank you.
Good. So, I mean, we know a lot about your background, but just for everybody, just tell us a little bit about, you know, why you would like to be on CPC and some of your background.
Very good. Well, I've been on many town boards, including school advisory committee, CPC, and a few ancillary boards as well. And I, I would, I am so happy to see John and Kathy here. I have an interest in CPC, also in the Housing Trust. My feelings for that is my, with regard to my priorities, I am very much in harmony with what Mr. Bowman and Ms. Donahue, Mrs. Donahue stated with regard to priorities of CPC. And both of them have way more of a background than I do. So I would defer to them. I mean, when Mara talked about people on boards, experience versus new people, I would so give up a position in order to have either one of them on the board. John, I worked with John for a long time, and he was incredible, not only in understanding the Coalition rules, spending the money appropriately, always asking the questions of the Coalition to make sure that the expenditures that we were recommending were eligible, as well as going the extra mile to find out supplementary sources of income. So maybe they aren't coming from CPC, but there are certainly other areas, federal and state grants, that could be acquired in order to supplement the monies that applicants were looking for. The fact that he's a lawyer, he was able to do so much more work with that, as well as secure some of the legal things that we needed to do. So he was just, you know, top-notch at all of those things. So I would highly recommend John to the board. And with regard to Kathy, I believe that the two important things for CPC are affordable housing and water protection. Kathy has had a very long, long experience in history with different water committees over the past, and their family is very involved in water, as it is. And I believe going forward that water protection and water sources will be critical in our future, in our long-term future. And I would so dedicate that loyalty to Kathy and her, and her background. So, so here I am, talking about them for the position.
You're promoting this pretty well.
But when it comes to affordable housing, I was on CPC when we deferred quite a bit of money, allocated, I should say, quite a bit of money to the Affordable Housing Trust in order to start to make a dent in our quota. I don't think we've done a very good job at that so far. And there's a lot of money in the trust. And I'm moving over to that because I applied for that too, so if you will, I'll address both of those as opposed to hanging around. I think there's a lot that we can do. I know that there are plans for a big-ticket item with the Central School and expanding there, and that's wonderful. But again, it's another big ticket, and whether that passes or not, it's going to be a long, long time till we can address affordable housing for, whether it be seniors or folks who just need the housing. I would like to think that we could balance that, and I would love to take a crack at some of that. I know there's a lot that we can do with affordable housing, whether it be, you know, buying down mortgages for individuals to big-scale projects like Central School. I think there's a lot that we can do, and we have the money. And I think it's time that we do it.
John?
No questions. Sure. I was on advisory with Lisa as well. I think she, is a little humble there. She's done a lot of stuff as well. You were on CPC for a number of years as well. So I'm a little confused, do you want to be on CPC, or do you want to be on affordable housing, or what's?
I would be honored to be on either.
Okay.
I do believe that Mr. Bowman and Mrs. Donahue have a great deal to offer that we need on CPC right now.
Right.
And I'm not quite sure who you have for applicants for the trust, so.
Yeah, I mean, just for CPC in general, there's one opening, I think, or there's four openings, but there's three people that are renewing, so there's one new slot potentially. And then there's one, two, three, four, five, six, six or seven applicants. So it's a tough, a tough group there. And all very qualified, as you mentioned. So I don't know, Affordable Housing Trust, we'll get to that in a minute. So it sounds like you're, is that's more of your emphasis in terms of the housing component of it as opposed to the open space component of it, or am I reading you right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Right?
Sean?
No, no questions for Lisa?
No. Mara?
I don't have any questions, but I have a statement, not a statement, but Affordable Housing Trust is led by Steve Irish now. He's, he's done a lot of good new things. And actually, I think your comment is really timely, because one of the things that they're starting to look at is their mission, and really the different strategies where other towns have been successful. And I know you, and I know your skill set, and, you know, I think you would be a great fit there to help move that along. It's almost like what they're missing right now on the Affordable Housing Trust is that sort of strategic, how do we redefine ourselves so we can actually make some forward progress? So not only partnering with the Citra Housing Authority, but also those other things that you mentioned about paying down mortgages and just other uses of those funds, I think you'd be a great asset there. And there's a lot of room there. So that's, I think it's a passion of yours, just knowing you, I think that would be a nice spot for you.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you.
If you answered the affordable cares.
Yeah, we were just looking at all that as well, so thank you.
All right, great.
You don't have to sit around for a few names to come up again.
Okay, moving on. Let me see, veterans, yeah, it's, I'm just trying to go bounce between these two, so it's... Yeah, so Kim Stewart, I believe. Come on up, Kim. How are you this evening?
I'm good, thank you. How are you?
Good. Just your name and address, if you would.
Sure. My name is Kim Stewart, 35 Brook Street, here in Situate.
Tell us a little about why you want, have an interest in the veterans.
Well, my inspiration really comes from my husband, who's a, he's a combat veteran, wounded. He's a Purple Heart recipient. I have a nephew who's a three-star general, and they're really my inspiration for wanting to do this. The reasons why is I would like to see some recognition and some appreciation. I know that the Veteran Service Officer has a very difficult job, and I think this council is fantastic, good way to help him. And I love that it has, you know, the five civilian spots, and the remaining spots are all veterans. I think that's wonderful. I do come with a little bit of a background in fundraising and large event planning, small event planning. I currently serve on two nonprofit boards, thus, I'm vice president of Sands, and I'm the vice president of Community Christmas. I've just recently stepped down from a very big volunteer commitment, so I feel like I will have the time.
Okay. So one of the things of, we're not actually going to be voting on the veterans tonight because I've got a possible resignation coming in.
Okay.
We just need to look at the whole thing in the next week or so.
Sure.
But I do appreciate your interest.
One thing we need to know is, you've got to have like, there's one renewal, one opening, two applicants, right? That's what's, that's what's reflected here. And the only other thing is, I think there's a condition, you're allowed to have so many people who are...
So it has to be five civilians, I believe, and the remaining, I think, under 115?
Five veterans, I think.
Five veterans and two civilians.
And then two civilians.
Oh, just two civilians? Okay, I thought it was five.
John, there's some incorrect information, so I want to hold on it completely.
No, I just wanted to make sure that Kim...
Yeah, okay.
Because if there's a drawback, the drawback might be if we have two civilians already. I'm not sure.
Yeah, understood. Completely understood. Now or in the future, you know, I would keep my application.
Do you have an interest in any other committees as well, Kim?
Not at this time. Okay, thank you, though. I knew you were going to ask that.
So Kim, what do you do for work?
What do I do for work? I'm a town employee. I like to keep my volunteer positions local, because I am on call 24/7, but I work for the Citra Police Department.
Does anybody else know?
Okay.
Full disclosure.
Well, I'm not a police officer.
She's the dog officer.
I'm the animal control.
Animal control.
Yes.
And she does a great job with Sands, and she's...
Thank you.
Susan Pippen.
Everything, I know.
Thank you, Kim.
Well, thank you very much, Kim. I appreciate it.
So we'll sort it all, you're not going to come back again.
Oh, yeah, no problem. No problem. Thank you very much. Thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
Do you got, who are our two civilians? Is it Aubrey and Mike? Are those our two civilians today?
It is, yeah. Yeah, so I've got, I need to speak.
They're not up. Okay. Right?
The...
I think so. No, I know, but...
There's some incorrect information, and we need to get it straight away. There's some people omitted, so I need to get it straight.
All right.
Okay, so we're going to zoning board. What do we have? We have one new applicant for zoning, Brian Doyle. Brian Doyle, not here. Okay. Let's see. Is that the last committee we have?
Historical Commission?
What are you looking at?
Is this Karen Brushton?
Karen?
Karen? Oh, I'm sorry. Come on up. I slipped an R in there.
Is it in?
My goodness, I'd know it's going to be such a process.
Well, we want to get you... No, you had...
Are you sure you don't work for the FBI?
How are you?
I'm fine, thank you. How are you receiving?
Good. Just tell us a little bit why you have an interest in Historical Commission?
Well, I've always had an interest in history in this town, very much so. I used to do volunteer work for the society. I've done archival work there. I've always had an interest in preserving what we have in this town. It's very important.
Maybe a little bit about your background, if you...
I'm an artist.
Okay.
How long have you lived in town?
Well, if I told you, I'd have to kill you.
Over 10 years?
I'm, yes, a longtime resident, yes.
And have you ever been involved with the society, you said, a little bit? Have you...
Yes, this Historical Society, most definitely, yes. And about three years ago was the last time I was doing some work for them, archival work. Yeah, it's fascinating, and you learn a lot, and there's a lot I think I can offer, because I'm passionate.
Is there any particular aspect of it that is drawing you to it right now? Is there any building reparation, or is there any...
All the buildings. All the buildings, I think, I think Mr. Ball may be on overload. I think he's got his hands full with trying to take care of all the buildings that we do have. And I'm very detail-oriented, so I see things that perhaps they could use extra help with and ideas. And I do have some ideas for them that would help.
Throw one out here.
Perhaps bringing in more people to support the society and commission would obviously, would they work with them closely, I know, and they would, you know, I can see that fundraising would be very good, very important, and bringing funds into, you know, to different projects. And all the ideas have escaped me right now, but I have a million ideas.
I'll ask you for one.
Yeah, I know, yeah.
Fundraising, good.
As I say, Karen, do you have some fundraising experience? Because that actually, that comment's come up a couple of times about the Historical Commission, Historical Society.
I have ideas for it. I have, I have not done it, but I have ideas for it, and I know what the process is.
Okay.
So I have the ideas, and I have the energy to do it, so, yeah.
Great.
Anything else? Not for me.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Thanks for waiting. Thanks for coming.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to take a shot at this. Michelle Murphy here?
Yes.
No, she's not here. Okay. I'm trying not to miss anybody, it's...
I think there's some people here from zoning.
Yeah.
Okay. There was one person invited.
Let's see, Ed.
No, I think the other two members for zoning are here.
Okay.
The incumbents.
So Edward Tibbetts?
Yes.
Please. Come on up soon, just to name and address again, if you would.
Edward Tibbetts, 28 Meeting House Lane.
How you doing, Ed?
Fabulous.
So why do you want to do this again?
Glutton for punishment.
So you were a, what, second alternate, first alternate, and then you became a full member?
Uh, yes. I've actually been on the board since 1997.
1997, okay.
I was off for one year, and then came back on. Served with John.
You're, I think you're up for more than that, weren't you, Ed?
I looked it up.
Wow.
And you out, so you have an interest in continuing to serve, huh?
Yes.
Are you still teaching, Ed?
I'm a 13-years middle school teacher in Marshfield. That's my primary occupation. I was on the school committee for two terms. Waterways Commission for four years. I think that's it.
So what's the biggest concern that the ZVA faces right now?
Uh, probably the biggest concern is the continuing threat of 40Bs. And I don't mean it in a negative way, except that until we have a, an affordable housing base of 10%, we have to, we're susceptible to a 40B. Great law, great opportunity for creating affordable housing, but it's been misused. And we've had to very carefully supervise some of the applications. But we can only apply the law as the law is stated. So the, having some continuity on the board is very helpful that way.
Ed, do you have any, oh, sorry, did you have another one?
No, John.
Oh, I was just going to ask you, a lot of, I don't know if you saw the coastal resiliency report that a consultant from Applied Engineering just presented to us. It's online if you get an opportunity, but I think one of the issues that will come before us as a town in the next couple of years are zoning regulations around our coastline, and how those different zoning regulations can impact future growth and rebuilding to kind of try to mitigate some of the damage that happens. I'm just curious what your thoughts, I know there may not be anything in front of you, but do you have any thoughts around that with your expertise on zoning and how some of that could be?
Well, the challenge with our coastal area is more or less built out. There's very little open land there. So if you have a change in zoning regulations, but a pre-existing property, they're not necessarily going to be impacted by the zoning regulations. So we have to, it's difficult to take people's property rights away through zoning, you can't do it. I mean, it's, and that's part of the reason the board is there. We do try to evenly, fairly apply the law. But again, it's, it's difficult to identify a portion of the town, the coastal community, and treat them differently than you would someone who's a mile inland. It's, it's people's land, they're paying taxes on it, and we have to apply the law evenly. I don't know, I mean, I think the way to encourage wiser coastal planet, coastal waterfront planning is probably not through zoning necessarily, as much as it is through building codes and that sort of thing. Zoning's more or less is the lot buildable, whereas what kind of structure can go on it? Elevations, setbacks would fall into zoning, but elevations and that sort of thing would be more in the building code. And that, that's been addressed and it's continuing to be addressed.
Anything else?
No, I know Ed, it's good.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ed.
So, I think Anthony's here too.
Yep.
Okay. So should I, okay, Anthony Brisherry? How you doing, Anthony?
Not bad at all.
So how long have you been on?
Uh, two years.
Two years, okay.
Yep.
So you're basically just in, okay.
I've never met you, Anthony, what's your background, just curious?
I've been in town for, coming up on six years. I'm a commercial real estate attorney. I work in Boston, I'm in-house for a title insurance company. I deal a decent amount with zoning matters and general conveyancing. And so that's my background, is my familiarity with 40A and 40B to a certain extent, what drew me to the board and plan on being in town for a long time. I feel that I'm an asset to zoning, so it's an area I'd like to stay involved in.
Nice to meet you.
So you've been on-
Thank you.
So you're the second alternate now?
I am.
Okay.
And first is who, is that Ed?
Frank Lynch.
Frank.
Yes, it's Frank, yep.
So how many, do you make it to all the meetings? How does that work, exactly?
We attend all, all members attend and vote at all the meetings, and we record all of the votes. I think the way we're all have input on the applications, and then, you know, if there's ever, when the vote is not unanimous, obviously the three voting members count, but we record all in case someone was disqualified before or after. If an application continues on throughout a hearing, you want to make sure that there were at least three applicants who heard the first portion of that application.
Right.
So, we treat it as a five-member board, but the three votes take precedent.
So for a first alternate to vote, someone would have to be missing, or?
Uh, we all vote.
Okay.
To, as to all the applications.
Gotcha.
The three votes of the three voting members, so that would be the three voting members if they're present.
Okay.
Vice versa, or what would carry or not carry the application.
Okay. Yeah, because I needed a little clarification on that earlier, thank you.
I did too, when I started, so.
So if one of the three aren't there-
Yes.
And they not participate in the rest of the conversation, I mean?
Uh, typically, the way that our chair looks at it, and I think really the board's in agreement, is that if, for instance, one of our voting members wasn't there for an application, and there was significant discussion on that application at, say, the June hearing, and that application was continued for some reason to the July hearing, that member for that application would become the alternate.
Gotcha.
Okay.
Or not vote at all, sometimes.
Right.
It's a decision the board and the chairperson can make, depending on whether anything meaningful was discussed at that hearing where that person wasn't present.
Alright.
Great.
Well, thank you.
Of course.
So in this, just a quick overview, there's two, you two are up for renewal.
Yep.
And there's one new person that's, that's applied.
Yes.
So, for those two spots.
Great.
Great. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else here from any of the committees that we may have possibly missed?
This guy didn't show up.
I guess that's no. Okay, moving on.
He's not up.
We have a nine o'clock special event permit for Heritage Days. I believe there's some people in the hallway.
Do we have to wait till nine?
Do we have to wait till nine? Is this a public hearing?
No, it's not a hearing.
Okay, good. That's what I actually, I asked that earlier, this other one.
It's only hearings you have to worry about.
Could you see the-
How are you ladies this evening?
Great, how are you?
Just need names and addresses. Please. Just so everybody knows who we're speaking with.
Jean De Jacomandria, 26 Oakhurst Road.
Linda Ferguson, 57 Kingsway.
Thank you. Okay, so this is a special event application, Chamber of Commerce. So just tell us a little bit about it, I know there's been some, some things that have occurred today. Peter, tell us a little bit about what your, I mean, obviously Heritage Days happens every year, and just tell us a little bit about the event.
Sure, so-
The plans are for it.
Alright, so this year, the committee made a few changes, and one of the things was to, we reached out to every business in town, and, you know, offered them ways to make the event successful for them as well, whether they're on Front Street or not. We also have reached out to the fishermen and the lobstermen to try and include them. We're still working on exactly what it's going to be, because obviously it's their busy season now too, but, and we've also gone all over the state to solicit new vendors, different ideas, things like that, just to kind of bring heritage back to Heritage Days and making an event that's good for the town, but also all the businesses in town. We've also worked with Sergeant Gil Martin pretty closely. He worked it last year, and I, we've had a couple meetings with him. Basically, last year, everything went really well, a couple tweaks, small things, and we're all on the same page, safety, security, the flow of traffic, things like that. We're also working with Tucker Patterson and Adam Conrad for the boat races this year, and that's one of the other things that they wanted to change up a little. I guess the weather was pretty bad last year, and so they want to make sure that everybody who's involved in that aspect of it is safe. And also, well, I'm going to let Jean talk, but, you know, I just wanted to put out there that there's a great staff this year. Elaine Bargazan, Claudia Oliver, and Jean, and myself, and both Elaine and Claudia have worked on the event for years. So there's great history there, and then there's also new ideas, so.
We're trying to bring a lot of the history back to Heritage Days, the heritage. We're trying to get back to a lot of the Irish heritage, being the most Irish city in America. We're trying to be a little more kid-friendly, so we are bringing in some more kid-related stuff. We're going to have character meet and greets, we're going to have a pirate with his parrot, and we're going to have Barbie and Ariel, we're going to have a petting zoo with a baby animal petting zoo for the kids. We are working with the Heritage, excuse me, Historical Society, and they're going to do a passport to situate, so people can go to the historical sites, any one of them, pick up their passport, travel. The Gatra bus is going to be taking people all around to all of the historical sites. Once they get there, hear a little spiel, they'll have a color-coded stamp on that site, which will actually be a picture of the site. And then at the end of the route, when they've done all the sites, they can go and have, put their names into a drawing, and they'll, they'll get a prize for seeing them all. So it's, it's good because it hopefully will get the kids more involved, and where they're actually coming from, where they're growing up, and how great a place it is. So we're excited about that, we're working with Dave Ball.
Is that like a separate Gatra tour bus that'll be specifically for those?
Yes, specifically, and we'll have our own buses, which will be bringing people right down to Heritage Days like we have always had.
Okay.
Again, we're bringing, we're trying to bring the heritage back to it.
Defer to the former vice chair, go down. John?
I think it's a great idea, you know, I think it's, you know, the more you can do that, the more people in town can appreciate, especially with the kids. It's where you start, because they'll always remember it, and always want to go down. Music is phenomenal, Jerry, you do a great job, just it's nice to kind of augment certain things that maybe have been-
Right, we do hear a lot about, you know, there's not a lot for kids, so now we're bringing, oh, we are, again, a photo booth. We're having a free photo booth, which is going to be, it's themed, like a sea shanty.
That's cute.
Yeah, so people can go in, they'll get two strips each or something like that, and they can go in with their friends. It'll hold like 20 people, it'll be handicap accessible, so that'll be kind of fun too, to remember your days. You know, it'll be specifically on it, Heritage Days 2016, kind of fun for people to have another, another memory. So lots of stuff going on.
That's great. I think the more you can involve the kids, it gets people down there, and like you said, pulls out the heritage of the town. The only question I had related to Sergeant Gil Martin's report for the music, where exactly is that going? Because I guess there was some feedback from when we had, who was the, Debar, who was the big name that we had last year that played at night?
Debaris.
Debaris, right, sorry. Debaris.
Yeah, sorry.
So I know it was very dark there, and just getting around was a little bit, and the crowd was big, you know-
We had problems with our lighting at the time.
Yeah.
Right.
And I think it's kind of addressed here, I just want to make sure that that's-
Yep, so Sergeant Gil Martin did meet with Mike Breen, and I put a call into him, I was away, but put a call in to him this week, but apparently he's away. But, so, the music is going to end by nine o'clock, which is a little bit earlier than it did last year, so it'll be that much lighter. And he is supposed to, Mike said he will make sure that lighting down there works. So-
Yeah, trap, there's a bit of a traffic issue by nonos there.
So the Sergeant Gil Martin's asked us to put up, or Jerry, to put up snow fencing that's at, you know, so the stage is actually, like, say it was here, and, you know, Rebus is here, well, over here, it's going to be moved over a little bit, so that when people are standing on this side of the venue, they won't be in the street. Yeah, they have to be inside the snow fencing.
Great.
Great event.
Sean?
Do you want to, Jerry, respond real quick to the-
Well, I was just going to actually just go down to the board and go-
Nope, nope.
Yep.
Not right now.
Mar?
No, I was just curious, last year, the success of it, you know, financially, just because there were a lot of changes, I was just curious about historical, any, if you had any historical information?
Yeah, we're hoping to not lose money this year.
Okay.
We lost some last year.
Okay. And are you still doing the vendors out on the Front Street?
Yeah. Yeah, so we actually, Morse Engineering was generous enough to make up true-to-size maps.
Plan, okay.
So we'll, we're going to have a lot more signage this year, some maps, but, so we have that going, so it's easier. Claudia handles all the vendors, it's going to be way easier for her to, you know, put vendors in, people will know where they're going. So they'll still be, basically the vendors and everybody are still going to be in the same places. And then, you know, transportation's the same.
Will you be doing the overnight booths again?
Yeah, we are doing the overnight booths again. That seemed to go over well. To some extent, it got dark pretty quick back there, so they didn't stay open as late as I think they wanted to, but, but, you know, it's, it means a lot to some vendors to not have to break down all their stuff, so.
Just identify yourself, Jerry. Just everybody know.
120 feet, Front Street. As far as the lighting from last year, I think it was determined that a very high percentage of the lights that rode in the parking lot were not working. So as far as-
Right.
People floating around, walking around, they were in the dark, and I think we took a rough count, and it was maybe about 50% of them weren't working.
Yeah, I know, we had heard that at the wrap-up after, so.
But we'll look at that now and make sure that they're-
Yeah, make sure they're operational. Anybody else?
No.
Do you want a motion or emotion?
Well, I have certain notes.
Okay, certainly, go ahead.
I'm concerned on the application as far as access for the parking lot, for us to stop working. I don't know if they changed the time there. Initially, she said they were putting it in for Thursday access instead of Wednesday. We have, last year, Wednesday, barely were able to manage to get ready for the show. And did you change that back to Wednesday, Linda?
I did not. Elaine put the, that thing in, and as we discussed, Jerry, months and months ago, the merchants in the harbor are fairly upset that they lose their parking from Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, and that because the stage is entirely done differently now, where a company comes in and puts it up in less than an hour, there's no need to close down parking, so the people like Rocco, or Rocco's Business loses parking for five days.
Is that a note?
So, right now it reads Thursday at 5:00.
Which is not acceptable. We have to have access over there on Wednesday as we did last year. We barely were able to get things right. We have a stage that comes in on Thursday afternoon. We already have to have the area pressed, which we stopped doing on Wednesday night. We cannot have any cars anywhere near there, because the trailer comes in, it has to come in, back in from the side of the next parking area to actually get in position. Last year, even on Wednesday, despite posting, there were cars parked all over the place that we had to wait for, eventually we're trying to tow them. This is my big concern amongst other things, is there will be cars there. Having moved over to that new location was a considerable increase in the amount of work we have to do. And there's only so much time in the days, the work is to do, the majority of this work coming at night after they work, they can't be here during the day. We have to get things done at night primarily, and we need more time, not less. Every year I bring this up, and we have some debate over the timeframe, and I say, one of these years, we're going to have a problem, right? Could be one day, could be two days. What happens? More time is spent, giving this a little buffer zone in case there is a bad day weather. So I'd rather be open day Tuesday. And even Tuesday, we would struggle to get the work. By the way, I'm a member of the Harbor Merchants Association. I don't know who these phantom people are that are complaining. There may be one or two, but not one of them has personally come up to me with a suggestion or request or complaint. In general, the Harbor Merchants are very pro this event. We're doing what we have to do to make it work, and we need that time. If there are one or two people down there that really want to whine about the fact that customers have to walk another 50 feet for one extra day, I don't think that's being realistic or fair. I think it's fair, it's what's good for the majority, the majority of the people in the town, the majority of the businesses. That's to make this event work, and we're looking for cooperation, not for people trying to make it more difficult. Again, we barely, barely got that done last year.
So can I just, so back in February-
Just one second, Linda, if you would. So I, I haven't spoken to Jerry, I know there's some additional things that they have to do this year, and I did watch it last year, and it, one of the things that's happening is a lot of the work's happening after 5:00. There was, there was an issue with some of the parking last year, and I, and I did speak with Frank today about it. I think that we could probably work out some kind of an arrangement, if he really truly needs that time, because like I said, the busiest part of the day is during the day there, during that week, the setup week. I don't think he's telling us stories when he says that he needs the time, because I did see that right up until Friday evening, they were busy with it. And I, I went down every night just to see where it was at, and we had an issue with some of the areas that were roped off, and that was changed. And actually, it wasn't even Jerry who had done it, it was sort of a mystery. I just wanted to give my input on it, because I do believe that that time is needed, and I spoke to the police department today, and there are some additional things that they have to do, as you just mentioned, which is probably going to take a little bit of time as well, you know, so.
So in February, when Jerry signed the contract, and we talked about the timing, he stated back then that he felt that the harbor merchants would support him. The chamber has heard from the harbor merchants on numerous occasions, and I am also a harbor merchant, and there were two meetings last year held after Heritage Days to complain about the parking being shut down for that length of time. In the interest of what's in the best interests of the businesses in this town, and the fact that the stage that Jerry used to put together, he put together by hand, it is now done by a company, the chamber felt that Thursday at 5:00 was more than enough time. However, Jerry also, he signed a contract agreeing to that, but said he would get the harbor merchants to sign off and say that, that it was okay to shut down Cole Parkway on Wednesday. it was okay to shut down Cole Parkway on Wednesday. I said if he could get all the harbor merchants to do that, then the chamber would agree and change the permit. I have not received that, so I did not change the permit.
You're gonna respond?
Yeah, first of all, I talked to the Harbor Merchants Association. They don't have any general complaint about this. I talked to some of the people that were closely concerned, I mean, close by the area there. The people that run the ice cream parlor at the movie theater, not a problem. As a matter of fact, they will be around, give us more support. Evo Garcia has been this contributor for this event financially in the last 10 years for Dunkin' Donuts. No problems whatsoever. Totally on board. CBS doesn't have a problem with it. The corner tenant is new. They obviously weren't here last year. They don't have a problem with it. So I don't know who all these people are, but they're invisible to me. And again, this is one or two people. And they're not coming to me. And the Harbor Merchants Association does not have a problem as a whole. And I talk to Paul regularly about this. He doesn't have a problem.
Well, as Linda just said, I mean, is there, can you get these people to agree to this?
Yeah, we have. We already talked.
So we would need, you know, obviously, they need to see it. We don't have to see it, but they need to see it.
Well, I also am questioning why somebody would all of a sudden make a change relating to the entertainment without bringing me on board or asking me any questions about, are we have difficulty doing this? Do you need the time? Do you need more time? They just made a policy here and.
Didn't you sign the contract?
I signed, first of all, there was an initial revamping of the rules, which I got in the fall time. And then there was a changing of the rules. And I signed that thing only to agree that I was, like I said, I'm only doing this to go forward so that I can be doing the music. I'm not agreeing to the terms on that page.
Well, when you signed it, you agreed to the terms. So it's a simple solution. Get the people to sign a piece of paper saying they don't care and the chamber will change the time and we can get it done on Wednesday.
And the bottom line here is realistically, if we don't have that time, we cannot do the show. It's that simple. I don't have 500 paid people that are doing all this construction that have an idea of what to do, that can do it whether I'm there or not. I have to be there. These people have to be out there afterward. And it's a miracle we did what we did last year. And I was gonna request actually shutting the area down this year on Sunday. That's how tough it was last year.
Well, that could never happen.
You have to understand that that's their livelihood.
If we can go back to, nobody is.
I'm just saying, that's their businesses. So you, they are probably concerned if you're gonna take off their pieces of parking.
Talking about one additional day here.
Well, you just said Sunday.
Yeah, I know. I said, that was what I was, I was thinking the mood had turned very positive towards this event last year. I had talked to Officer Gilmore about giving an extension of the time. So anyway, I was hoping to have more time here. If we can agree that we can close it down officially Wednesday at 6:00, but start bringing materials over there earlier, which is what we did last year, pile foods up on the island starting a day or two early, so we have them to ready, then we can work that out and make it work again. Again, we have to do a certain amount of work by the time the stage comes in on Thursday. You have to have that area cleared, half secured, and a lot of things in place.
So the people that you've mentioned, though, if you could get them to sign and give this to Linda?
I will have to do that.
And then everything should be fine.
Great.
So can we still, well.
So we should just approve the event as proposed. And then if there's a need for modification, Jerry, you get the signatures. We can always bump it back if people are gonna be amended.
So Linda just come back and.
And then we'll just bump it back if need be. How's that?
Sounds good.
All right.
Motion then?
We'll get back to that motion.
Yeah.
I'll move the Board of Select and approve Heritage Days for August 5th. Luminary area only through August 7th. Is that, do I need time?
One second.
Actually, take that back. Scratch.
Yeah, hold on.
That's my motion. Is there supposed to be a time?
This is the event itself, right, John, from?
I'm only looking at the proposed motion. Special events?
The setup times are in the background information if you want to incorporate it in, John. So the motion just notes that August 5th is when the luminary area takes place.
Right.
The event itself is the motion.
All right, so let me, let me.
Moving in August 5th through August 7th.
Let me just, let me move to strike that motion. What's the time period, Linda, you want set up on Thursday, which would be the 4th?
I believe the way it was written would be 5, from 5:00 PM on Thursday.
Yep.
Through breakdown was to be by noon on Monday, the 7th.
Noon, so at noon, okay, so.
That's not even on this motion at all, though, is it?
It's on the, it's on the application, right at the bottom.
This is more of the breakdown for the vendors, I think.
So I'm gonna move, make a motion to move the Board of Select and approve Heritage Days, starting on August 4th at 5:00 PM through August 7th, which is Monday, to 12:00 PM.
Contingent upon all the requirements of the town departments.
Contingent on the requirements of approval of all town departments, all town departments.
Second, Mr. Vignani, any further discussion?
Nope.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous.
Ladies, thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck, everybody.
This is, just take that home. Okay, next we have an update on wayfinding signs and bids. Laura Hobart, Town Planner, come on up, Laura.
Yes.
Certainly.
Is there anything in the packet for this?
I didn't see anything. I didn't see anything.
Okay.
It's more of an update, anyway.
Okay, yes. Pretty much of an update. There are two areas where we've been making some headway on the wayfinding signs. One is on the signs themselves. We requested a quote for the first phase and we did get some responses back. There are 17 signs in the first phase. They include signs on buildings, signs that say welcome to and, you know, particular village, some wayfinding from First Parish Road to Situate Harbor and then on to Situate Lighthouse. So there's a variety of signs there, three public parking signs. And we got one quote for $30,900 and some dollars. And then the second quote we got was for about $15,000. So there was a big difference there. But the second company was one that our consultant has worked with and feels very positive about. He says that their sign quality is better than, you know, any of the other companies. So.
Is that the $15,000 quote?
That was the $15,000 quote. So that sounds very positive. The other piece of the signs are banners, which would be on the light posts, those ones that hang in the brackets off the light posts. And we went ahead and, you know, also solicited for those. And there would be 20 for Situate Harbor, 12 for Green Bush, 12 for North Situate, and 6 for Humorock. And what I was, yeah. What was gonna be in the packet was kind of a visual, which you'll all get one to take home and hang at someplace. So though, we got some quotes at $5,300, $3,200, and then the low quote on those was $1,600. And the low quote will be a fabric type of banner. It's a company that they've actually used in Situate Harbor before.
Does it withhold strong winds?
It's one they've used before, so I assume that it works.
Well, these are more permanent, right? This is more of a permanent, this would be more of a permanent than banners in the past that may just be like patriotic or, that's my only question is, you know, maybe.
Yeah.
I think the idea here is, Amberbine, Tenpenny Crest Road, the idea is, as far as EDC is concerned, that these need to be taken down in the fall. And they need then to be put back up in the spring.
Okay.
Because often what happens is, we all know, good intentions, and they're not maintained. And they end up destroyed. Because we do have some wonderful storms.
That's my concern, yes.
So they will come down.
Enough quality.
And they will be put back up again so that they can be saved, as it were.
Yeah, I guess.
That's our intent.
Yeah, we may have to, you know, see how they do, you know, start out in Situate Harbor and see how those go. And, you know, but.
And we're trying to be really inclusive with all of the business districts, including Humorock. How can we possibly forget Humorock?
Yeah.
Great idea. Looks good. So you'll get the quotes to us so we can vote to spend it at some point in time?
No, I can approve all that. I really wanted the board to hear what Laura and Ian were doing. This sort of bubbled up because the harbor merchants were actually talking about getting banners. And I was concerned because we've just spent a considerable amount of time and effort and funds to develop this sort of universal branding that ties the entire community together. So I just wanted to make the board aware, since we've also just bought our streetlights in the polls, that, well, not the polls, but that, you know, this is something that's an initiative of the EDC. Now, do you, who are you anticipating will put these up, Laura? Have you?
I have not really talked to Kevin about it, Kevin Cafferty. I don't know if any of his people can get up there or.
Typically something that the DBW has not done in the past. So another piece of the quote might be looking at a company to do it, but we can explore that.
Yeah.
The other thing is, in terms of the wayfinding signs, the signage on buildings and the overall concept, the board had discussed. But I didn't recall, and maybe you could answer for me, Laura, that the board actually approved the location of the wayfinding signs. And that's a concern for traffic sign as well. It's okay to purchase them, but again, I think the board needs to look at those final locations.
Sure, yeah.
So, but I think it's fair to say, we used FY16 money to do this. So we wanted to make sure you were all on board since we encumbered the funds. And Nancy has, what, 30 days to close them out, so.
Yeah, I did take the whole package to traffic rules.
Yeah.
I also went around with Sean McCarthy and we went to each individual location and picked out which corner would be best.
So the board, that's just the piece the board is missing. And then, and the other thing too, just as a way of information, this is official now. It's copyrighted and trademarked for the town of Situate. So it can be used anywhere and anytime. Laura and I sort of control the release of it. So we anticipate, hopefully, that you'll start seeing it on vehicles and any other things with the town. So over the long term, since it's such a great, I think, design that the EDC's put together.
I'll tell, I'll pass that on to Mark. He'll appreciate it.
Great. So you'll bring some out at some point that says.
Yep, can do.
Is your timing or, I don't know.
Like, what's the lead time once you get it?
Yeah, I think he'll take, yeah, maybe take a month or so to actually fabricate these signs. And then the installation.
Looking into August.
Probably, yeah. Yeah, it'd be nice to have it for Heritage Days.
It might make sense to do it in the spring.
The banners will be quicker.
Yeah.
Might make sense to do in the spring if you can't get them in by August.
So if we have everything in place, all our ducks in a row, as it were, we can go forward.
Exactly, just do it next year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great.
Next is a discussion vote of the Cudworths Veteran Cemetery Rules and Regulations. Don Knapp, Veterans Agent. Come on up, Don.
Okay, so tonight I'm back. This is from an earlier discussion that we were looking at the new section in the Cudworth Cemetery, the cremains garden. So basically in front of you to present what I think should be the rules and regs on that section. The rest of it, on the rules and regs, I just probably just did some verbiage change, updating some verbiage, but I didn't change any rules. I just focused on the cremation part of it. So that's what's in front of you tonight. Again, no changes on any rules that were currently there. And just more of an update and to get it up to date for the cremains garden.
I mean, I, I look at it, I don't, I don't like it. I don't think there's anything we can do about it. I would just, you know, I look and say, if there's a veteran that lives in the town of Situate and he goes, they sell his home or whatever, he goes to a nursing home or somewhere in Marshfield or Cohasset, he becomes, and he passes away or she passes away, they become ineligible for.
That's, that case you're bringing up right now, that's, it's gonna depend on, first of all, A, how long were they in the nursing home? Are they considered a resident now in Marshfield?
Right.
Or was it a medical issue where the veteran had to go to this nursing home? Maybe there was anticipation that they were gonna leave or was a hospice situation? In my eyes, and I think what we've been doing for the last, boy, way before I was here, is that that's not the case on this. The case there would be home of record. So if he was living in Situate, a medical issue came up and he went to a nursing home and passed, there's never been an issue with that.
Or like an Alzheimer's unit in Quincy for five years or?
Well, I just take it, my issue is what happens if, you know, somebody's, they're no longer going to afford to live here, they move in with their child, who happens to live maybe a town or two towns over, or frankly, maybe the western part of the state, you know, for two or three years until they expire. And they say, I want to be buried back in Situate. Under the policy, they don't qualify. Because they're no longer a resident technically because they moved out.
Or vice versa.
And I guess my problem is that I look at it, is that, you know, if they've been living here for short term, four years, and then they disappear for 30, 40, 50 years, then I could see if there's a lot of people looking to get buried, you know, maybe we'd have to put restrictions. Just my thoughts are, if somebody says, I want to be buried, they've got an affiliation or attachment, grew up here, were, you know, drafted here or they moved here and lived here for 30, 40 years and had their family and said, I want to be buried here. I find it hard for us to say, you don't qualify.
And I totally agree with you. I looked at this for the last five years. I grew up in this town. I have a lot of friends here. I have a lot of parents that were, you know, my friends' parents that passed and they were probably buried in there. Some that are probably anticipating being buried there. I want to be buried there maybe, but I'm looking at Bourne. So there are a lot of options out there. When we say they may not be able to be buried here in Situate in the veteran cemetery, there are three, there are three other national cemeteries that they're qualified for. You got Bourne, Agawam, Winchton. It costs nothing. And they're beautiful. So as far as a solution, if we're gonna run out of space, it's not about that. It's about, these are residents of the town of Situate. It was in the rules. That's how they're written. I'm not changing the rules. Again, that's up to you. If you guys can come up with a better solution, that people aren't gonna be coming up here when there's not a place for them to go, who's lived there their whole lives. I'm all for it. I'm not here to say that I'm making the rules. These rules are here.
One second.
But no, you know what?
No, I just wanted to say something.
People have been attacking me and they've been, you know, and I had to go in the paper and defend myself. I didn't make these rules. And I think the public should know that.
1987 is when.
Absolutely.
When they were done. Joe Norton was on the board there and there were the other slow ones.
But the only, I just want to go on the back of what John was saying, the opposite, okay, so a veteran lives his whole life in Virginia, moves down here with his kids because he maybe needs some extra help or whatever, becomes a citizen of Situate for 18 months, passes away, he's eligible to be buried in Cudworth.
Absolutely.
I mean, I'm just saying that I, the whole, it's kind, you know what I mean?
And again, and they're here, they're in front of, they're in front of the board now.
Right.
If that's something that you guys look at and you say, hey, listen, you know what, you have to be a resident of Situate for, like you said, maybe a year before you're eligible. That's fine. I mean, but something, you know, right now, as it stands, that's the way it is. That's all I'm saying.
Sean?
Yeah, no, and that was my first question, is when these were drafted. What about, and I don't know if this will fix what's before us tonight, but maybe, maybe we can do something about going forward. Could, could it be in that person's will? I don't know, you know? And then, you know, if they, you know, resident of Situate and they retire out of town, out of state, but it's in, you know, it might be in their will.
We just change the rules. We just have to change the rules.
What did it change them?
Well, we gotta put some thought into it and say.
If they just need to be a little bit broader.
If you've lived in the town for 25 years or pick a number, and you go somewhere for your last five years because you need health concerns or whatever, I mean, it's gonna be a little bit of management, depending on how we put it together. But right now, we're excluding too many people that have lived here for a long period of time and this is the main part of their life. And it's not at any, it's the way it was written back in, they didn't think of it back in 87. And we didn't think of the fact that we may be running out of space. So there's only gonna be so many space. And there's not, you know, I think we just have to incorporate and put some guidelines on it that says, if you've lived in the town for X number of years, no matter where you were at the end of your life, then you have the opportunity to get one of the spaces here.
And again, I mean, it's unique here in Situate, again, that we have a veteran cemetery. A lot of towns do not. They don't run into this problem because.
So we'll just deal with it.
And that was my question to Chair, is there another town in the state that you've, you have identified that does have a veteran cemetery? And what do their rules look like?
That's a good question.
No, I, you know what, I'd have never looked at them.
So maybe that might be.
But again, you gotta remember now that, no, they are, they're all private. They're all private, yeah. Again, it comes down to space.
Yeah.
And people are dying every day. And it's how much space do we have?
So I think what the board needs to do is look at it, give you some proposals in terms of how we think we may be able, and we'll discuss it, and figure out what the best way to accommodate everyone. Because right now, as John mentioned, I mean, I mentioned my father-in-law to you earlier. I mean, he's now living in Marshfield. He lived here for 65 years.
Right.
Right? So technically, per this, he couldn't be buried here. I mean, he's gonna be buried in Bourne anyways.
That's what I thought about that.
But that's, you know, people go down to South Carolina because that's where their kids are because they are, you know, at the end stage of life. And, you know, we're end stage of life and, and, you know, we're, the rules are just a little bit too strict against it and I think we need to just look at it.
I mean, again, you know, just going forward, the plans that we have to try and expand the space that we have, they're in place.
You didn't write them.
Oh, no, absolutely not.
20 years ago.
Oh, at least, yeah. I'm just following the rules. That's all I'm doing. And, and again, tonight, my whole thing on this was to get the Cremaine's Garden, that's fairly new and, and we need some rules up right now because people want to use it, they want to have access to it. And I think it's very important that we get those in. Even if they did, you'll get that one section and we're comfortable with it, we move on, but, and then go back and address, like you said, the other issues, but right now...
I just drafted something saying, you know, in the event that a deceased veteran doesn't reside in the town of Situate at the time of his or her death, a deceased veteran may be interred at a Situate veteran cemetery if he or she has resided in Situate for X, whatever the number, consecutive years. That would then give you the ability to say, okay, if the person's resided here for a number of years and, you know, give them, afford them the chance to do it.
Maybe instead of resided, that they're residents.
Resident.
Rick at the records, right?
That's the same.
Whatever you call it, yeah.
Got a couple of questions.
Grace's resident, there you go. Has a...
Just your name.
I pretty much asked or answered the question about who's writing the rules, how the rules get determined here in Situate. The last time I saw it was 1987, the rules that Mr. Knapp gave. My other question is, the state of Massachusetts has rules regarding vets who lived in Massachusetts. Why isn't one of the rules about time of employment if you showed residency in Situate and had, you know, resident, went into service, came back? You have one of those.
There's a home of record law.
Can you just say your name and address?
Oh, I'm sorry. My name's John Brown. My father's a retired town official and he's probably one of the oldest veterans in town and grew up with Jack Shone. I was in touch with Steve Litchfield this afternoon, who's very active in veterans' affairs, and Steve said that there's a state law that said what Gary was just saying about Massachusetts state law, home of record, where the veteran was deployed. Jack grew up in Situate, was deployed from Situate into World War II. So does not the state rules and regulations apply to each town?
That's something I'd have to look at.
Have to look at it and have to see what the law was specifically. Right, but if that were the case, it trumps, it preempts the local.
You know, Jack was a fixture in this town, much like Ronnie was, his brother. Jack was a Green Bush guy. I'm a Green Bush kid. Gary's a Green Bush kid. So, Sonny, you know, we've been here all of our lives and Jack chose to go to the warmer climate, which is what most of us do when we get into our senior years. He was deployed from Situate. That's the bottom line. He was a Situate native resident forever until it got too cold.
That's another one.
So, I mean, my whole point is, and what my father asked me to say was, it needs to be amended for somebody like Jack Shone.
I think that's what you're hearing tonight though.
Yeah, and, you know, I'm just trying to make my point.
But we're not going to vote on this tonight. I don't think we should vote on this tonight.
No, so we need to amend that whole language.
No, you can't, your policies and procedures don't allow you to vote on a policy change the first meeting. You've heard it.
Okay.
And as far as the home of record and state requirements, as our Veterans Agent, who's schooled in these matters, pointed out, we are unique on having our own veteran cemetery. So that is why the Board of Selectmen has done its rules and regulations locally.
For three years.
You, as the board, set those rules and regulations and as you're discussing, can amend them.
Okay.
So I would suggest that we just think about it in the next meeting, maybe...
Put some ideas together.
Yeah, and Don can do some research on, you know, what qualifications are for the situations like you gentlemen have raised in terms of folks who have been here a good part of their lives and want to be interred here.
I'd be interested in what other towns do as well, Don. I think that would be helpful.
Yeah, I think that, you know, again, yeah, it goes back to what's in the rules now and...
Well, yeah, you just follow the rules and, you know, it's there, you know, almost 20 years old. And if we can find some other towns that have a local veteran cemetery, that might be a start and we can help you with that.
Thank you, Don.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Tell Bob we're going to do just that, okay?
Do you need, do you need the board to adopt the cremation?
I presented that, yeah.
Are you going to get jammed up if they don't talk about this for another month?
Um, as long as, it gets a little complicated. As long as it's the monetary part of it, I can handle that. And then, the only rule about that is that, the timeframe.
Okay.
As far as what we're going to allow, and that's what I put in there. The only reason that timeframe that I put in that section was, again, it's going to go back to this 31 spots there. If people decide that they want to go ahead and bring in their urns now, urns, I'm sorry, that place will be full tomorrow.
Is it 31 doubles then, Don?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So I just think that, you know, those rules have to be there.
Okay.
In your situation, is, is the person, is the person deceased now?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. So it would be an urn, someone bringing an urn. That's another thing we got to figure out.
I put those, like I said, I put my recommendations in there on that.
Yeah.
And there's a reason behind it. It wasn't, I didn't just throw a number there, I just thought about it and, just a suggestion and...
Thank you, sir.
I think they were fine with all those, it was just the qualifications, the eligibility.
Yeah, if we can just tweak those a little bit, just...
All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next, we have a discussion of vote, budget adjustments. Nancy Holt?
I have one question. Are you going to vote on this tonight?
No, we're not voting on it, no.
We have to write the policy.
Yeah, we're going to take a look at it. Take a look at it.
It'll be on another agenda, okay?
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll give you a good five minutes.
Good evening and congratulations on being ahead of schedule.
Don't say that.
Knock on fake wood.
I know, exactly.
I have a couple of items before you as we close out fiscal 16.
Okay.
The first one is a little bit different. We haven't done it for a while, at least since I've been here, in regards to the revolving funds. So the chapter 44, section 53 E and a half revolving funds that are set, have a spending limit that is set annually at town meeting. And for fiscal 16, the revolving fund for the, the beach revolving fund was set with a limit of $265,000 and I'm asking for you tonight to raise that to $282,000. It is just for fiscal 16, which just closed last week. And that is because, as a revolving fund, it can pay for expenses outside of a normal fiscal year. And as you're aware, we did parking lot improvements in fiscal 15, but some of those costs flowed into 16 to the tune of about $36,000, which was expected to come out of 15 when that limit was set. So when it came out of 16, it kind of blew out our limit. So if we could raise it up to 282, I don't think we're going to go anywhere near that. We're probably going to be around 270, 272, but I wanted to give myself a little bit of a buffer, just so I wouldn't be back before you in another two weeks' time saying, oh, by the way, could we change that?
And is that a permanent raise, Nancy, or is that just for this particular instance?
Only for fiscal 16.
Yeah, because we would have to have annual town meeting, right?
Yeah, we, we set it every year at annual town meeting, but the board has the ability to raise the limit.
Okay.
On any one of them. Like I said, we haven't had to do this since I've been here. I've never actually had to do this before.
Yeah.
So, something new and different. We want to keep it fresh for you.
And the rest are pretty straightforward?
Yep, so, um...
Motion?
If you want to do the motion on the beach, it's up to you, or we can do them all together, whatever is in the board's purview.
They're separate.
It's separate, you can do it separately.
Want me to do the motion?
Sure.
Move that the Board of Selectmen increase the expenditure limit set for the FY 2016 Beach Revolving Fund in Article II of the April 13, 2015 Annual Town Meeting pursuant to Mass. General Law Chapter 44 S., Section, I mean, 44, Section 53 E.1/2 from $265,000 to $282,000.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Vignani, further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Four to zero?
Okay, so the next item is the chapter 44, section 33B, transfers between departments and some line item transfers. And this was a handout that I had to give to you because as of 5 o'clock this afternoon, we had another one and I had to add that on, unfortunately. So we have two of each. The ones that are within departments, so they're just line item transfers, town clerk, to the town clerk salaries from town clerk support services, and these are the additional payroll costs associated with the special state senate primary and election to fill Senator Headland's seat when he became mayor of Waymouth. We did receive some funding from the state, a little over $3,000, and that covered the actual cost, but we still have to fund some of that extra salary. For the fire department, we're, I'm asking for a $27,000 transfer from fire department regular salaries to fire department repairs, maintenance and equipment. This would cover three things for the fire department. One would be, they have repairs that have come up as, as happens at the end of the year, all the machinery and equipment, all of a sudden decides to, to give up the ship. So we did have problems with rescue two and engine three for approximately $6,500. And also this would fund the town share of the FEMA grant that the fire chief told you about for the new self-contained breathing apparatus, which is just shy of $20,000, so we would take care of that. And this is the second thing, town share grant match that the, would be taken out of fiscal 16. The other one was for the radios that were at the beginning of fiscal 16. We did look at the washer dryer, but the washer dryer cannot be purchased yet. The public safety building needs to be a little bit farther along so they know that the dimensions of the room before they can actually do that. So that'll be out of the fiscal 17 budget and only be $1,200. And then for the 44, chapter 44, section 33B line item, actual transfers, the one that came in this afternoon, my recommendation to you is from fire department regular salaries for $2,500 to the general liability and property insurance line, which was in the black until this afternoon when it potentially was going to go into deficit. And this is due to medical costs for injured firefight, on-duty firefight personnel that were received today but were actually incurred in fiscal 2016. So we had five bills and an independent medical exam that came in. So it's just the timing of it. And then the other one is from Facilities Public Buildings General Fund to the Widow's Walk Enterprise expenses. Widow's Walk has been under a spending freeze since January. Widow's Walk has been under a spending freeze for the last three years from mid-year. But the good news is Widow's Walk is having a stellar year in fiscal 16. It probably is going to be one of the best years it's had in a long time. June is wrapping up to look like the best June it's probably had in about eight or 10 years. Those numbers were just coming in today. Unfortunately, we can't tap that revenue. So as I'm telling Bob, for the last four months, don't spend, don't spend, don't spend, Bob's telling me, I need golf balls.
Yeah.
I got to have golf balls. You know, I can't have a golf course without having golf balls. I can't have a golf course without having, you know, stuff to sell as merchandise supplies. Plus, as the Widow's Walk is getting older, the equipment is giving up. As we keep saying publicly, it's got one more year. We're in the final year fiscal 17 of the debt and there's a lot of stuff on the capital plan to be repaired. So there is money that's being invested in equipment repairs that's also been a drain on it this year.
Just a question, Nancy. Out of that same bucket, like building maintenance, like this appealing paint problem there and stuff, does that fall under the same or does that, is that under facilities? How does that work?
That would be under, normally we would not do this at all, but we don't have any place to go. They don't have any retained earnings, which we couldn't do for the summer of the year.
No, I just, I just, it's a separate question. Like if you were doing some building maintenance on that building, does it come out of there?
They have a repair and, they have a repair and maintenance line.
On their own, okay.
If it was going to be more than $25,000 and it was going to have more than useful for five years, you'd do it as a capital project. And they have a number of them that are on the capital project coming up in fiscal 18 and 19.
All right, thank you.
But in terms of the golf balls, that's inventory, it's not an expense.
It is, it's actually, they have merchandise supplies. So it's actually an expense line item and then they take in revenue from the sale of it.
But don't you count it as an asset if you have anything left at the end of the year?
It is part of their, it is part of their assets for inventory, but for actually, I can't use that to pay the bill to buy them. Same, same reason that I can't touch any of this extra revenue they're bringing in. When I wrote this, we were looking at 18,000 over, their, what their projected forecast was for the year. I think that's going to be less than, more than, 50% more than that when June is set and done and put in the books. As I said, they've had a great year at the end of this year, but you can, you can't tell with Widow's Walk. Last year, they couldn't open for an extra month because of the snowpack.
Right.
When we don't have golf balls, then people can't play.
And that would be a problem.
All right, we have three separate motions, I think.
I move to transfer from the available fund, available general fund budget line of Facilities Public Buildings in the amount of $11,500 to Widow's Walk Enterprise expense lines in the amount of $11,500 pursuant to Mass. General Law Chapter 44B, Section 33.
Second.
Second by Mr. Vignani. Further discussion?
One question. Does this get paid back?
Yeah, it's one way.
It's one way. So the town is essentially lent, giving...
It's subsidy.
Subsidizing the golf course for $11,000.
And we couldn't have done it, even if we'd gone to special town meeting in the spring and done it, it still would have had to come from the general fund because there were no retained earnings.
Sean, I don't remember.
Yeah.
You do it to cover their loss?
There's, there's been times when there's been vote, special town meeting votes for Widow's Walk. I don't know if it was coming from their retained earnings or coming from another source.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
No choice.
I move to transfer from the available general fund budget line to the fire department regular salaries in the amount of $2,500 to the general liability and property insurance expense lines in the amount of $2,500 pursuant to Channel, Massachusetts General Law Chapter 44B, Section 33.
Second.
Second by Mr. Vignani. Further discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Is this the third one?
Yeah, that's...
There are no numbers on this. It's just...
It's just the line item transfers.
I move to transfer the available budget lines listed for the fire department and town clerk department to those lines in deficit for each respective department.
Second.
Second by Mr. Vignani. Further discussion? Seeing none?[1614.82] Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
So Nancy, do we end June 30th with not using the reserve fund at all?
Yes.
So we do not use the reserve fund at all. That's.
But we rarely do. Well, we.
The $90,000 reserve fund?
Unless we transfer it to snow and ice or something.
No, but the fact that we haven't touched it, you probably can't find another community in Massachusetts that can say that. We've rarely spent it down.
If you tell people they can.
No, no. I'm just saying that that, that's pretty good.
And the advisory committee will be voting these at their July 13th meeting.
July 1st meeting?
13th.
Thank you, Nancy.
Thank you.
We're going to take a five-minute break. Continue on. Okay, reconvening in this meeting of the board of selectmen. Next, we have a discussion, next steps, the situative adaptive building reuse committee. Trisha Venkatesi, please.
So at your meeting two weeks ago, you had a rather lengthy presentation on the report of the adaptive reuse committee. Lots of recommendations and sort of long-term and short-term implications for a number of our public facilities. So the memo that you have in the packet attempts to frame some of those issues. There's many probably that aren't included or some that you hadn't thought of that are included. But in order to keep the momentum that we have from the excellent report that I think the committee put together, the staff need some guidance as far as next steps. So this is just sort of a little roadmap. I don't expect you to go definitively with conclusions or whatever, but clearly, you have no committee now, the adaptive reuse committee met its charge. So in terms of next steps and what the board would like to see, that's, that's what you have before you.
Just for record, I watched the meeting, all three hours and 50 minutes of it on YouTube because I know I wasn't here last week.
Wow.
But, but it was a great presentation. But I think we, I don't know if we have another meeting just dedicated to this because I think we would all agree we have to put a stake in the ground somewhere and start. And I don't know that we've all discussed where that stake is.
Right.
It's about as broadly based I can say that. It's a lot of stuff going on.
No, you go ahead.
Well, the committee came back and they had two, two options for us or two proposals they had. One was to knock the school over and to put a development there. And the other one was to build a standalone senior center behind it, which I think we thought would cost about $8 million or somewhere in that range. But then, I think we all agreed that that would tie it into the future development of gates, which would be another 20-plus million dollars on top of that. So we've got like a 30 to 40 million dollar project to do both of them. And that, that was one of the concerns that I had with it. So although I think those are two possible solutions, you know, I think there's other things we can talk about in terms of what can happen with the property. I mean, personally, there's, unfortunately, there's not an easy answer. So the things that are running through my head, A, the seniors need a new place. B, I don't want to knock down gates. And C, I don't want to spend a lot of money. A lot of money meaning $40 million because I don't think it's going to pass. And I don't think, I don't think that that's viable on the, on the citizen's tax roll right now. So those are the things that are going through my head in terms of what I am thinking about in terms of a solution. So, and I know I mentioned this the other meeting and I got some feedback from Derfie Brown in terms of the slope of the land, but the only solution that I see that can do all those things for me is to put the senior center in gates and to put them in on the, whatever wing is over by the.
Tennis courts.
Tennis courts there. And do, do a portion at a time, give them as much space as they want. If they want 14,000 square feet, if they want 20,000 square feet, give them 20,000 square feet. And you're going to have to, in stages.
I think Book Street's interesting. I, I'm, weeks ago, the, a potential, maybe some form of a land swap with the housing authority with the Driftway because it's right on the bike path, it's across from the golf course, a nice opportunity. You know, one thing I have to say, I saw it in the Boston Globe two weeks ago, although this wouldn't necessarily be germane to it. They're doing it on the vineyard, you know, doing like, what are they called? Small homes or something, you know? Where they're trying to change their zoning to be able to have like, like 500-square-foot homes or something like this, tiny homes. It gets you back to what I've said along, which I forgot the community, if it's Sharon or something. What they've done is they've created cluster communities of small little homes close together with a flexible open space, but the idea being senior housing, elderly, disabled, a lot of blood drawn, a lot of angry, a lot of upset people, and then we'll still be without a senior center and a big white elephant, gates, and then that'll be about four or five years down the road and, you know, town have to decide what's going to do then. That's the one, my, it's my biggest concern right now is if we want a senior center, all the stakeholders have got to, and I'm not pointing, I'm talking about all the people who've been involved, to sit and say, we're doing this to try to get the goal, the end. We're all in agreement that we needed a different facility. What happens if your option fails? What do we do? You know, that's why I'm thinking, I'm prepared to go forward with a building, a standalone building, because I'm prepared to say, let's try to see if we can get that. But if that fails, then are people prepared to turn around and say, well, you know what? Maybe the prudent thing to do is to go into gates as a whole. I don't know. But I don't want to be put on, you know, people saying, oh, you're doing that just to make the, the first option fail. You know, it's just, my question is, you know, which one do we want a consensus say, this is the best option, let's go with it and see if it passes. And if it passes, so be it. It's done. It's, if it fails, then I begin to think about what, what do we need to do and plan for. That's all.
So we're going to have another set of plans for a new building? Would that be a new set of plans?
I think we'll probably use the same plans in a different location, right?
No, I don't think.
I mean, the structure.
I don't think what they showed us.
Did they have a plan?
Is anything like what we had for.
Well, we saw the artist rendering.
That was just an artist rendering, right?
Right.
We have a fit plan for ours. We don't have a.
Nothing structural, yeah. And the old plan was 11,000 square feet. I mean, I just think that we, we put it out to the public, put it on our website, maybe do a Survey Monkey, try to send it around, say, who's interested? You know, these are the options, this is what we're looking at. What's your feedback? Of course, obviously, we need to have some kind of estimates and costs, you know, otherwise it's useless to say, yeah, I like this one.
That's where I want to go.
Yeah.
For the third time. But I'm paying, we'll do it right.
But I like your idea of discussing it more, John. You know, like someone out there might have an idea that none of us have.
I've thought of it.
You know? What's the.
And I put, I'd put it on a deadline. In other words, not to delay this, you know, so we're talking about this in December.
Didn't go to 17 meetings to say it.
Yeah, I agree.
I would say, put it limited 60, 60 days. We just try to figure out if there's any, any insights anybody has. You know, that'll put us back to, what, September? Nothing's really going to be delayed during that time period. I know people are going to be on vacation. Well, hey, tough it. You know what? We're trying to get things done in town.
My concern with that, John, is that if it's anything like how people respond to some of the junknesses on Facebook that you're going to get, most of the people responding to that are going to be doom and gloom people who, they are, it's maybe $6 million because they can build one for $2 million. I'd rather see a public forum from Saturday morning.
That's what I'm saying, a public.
Open meetings, you know, library, whatever, and let people commit. I think you'd get a more representative group of people who would show up on that and probably do a survey, I think. It could be a pretty good success when we ran that meeting.
A 33% portion.
Yeah. Big number, but there were some naysayers and there were a lot of, and there was, there were some suggestions, Sean, that were thrown out at that, at that session that we considered. Mr. Thaler.
How do you find out if someone would develop that building? Who would you talk to to find out if someone would be interested?
It's a couple of people we can talk to? No.
Buying gates and.
I can, I'll ask Stephen Coulter because they just interviewed three different firms that are doing it for them, and most of the funding is coming from grants and, you know, they're going to be looking for a small portion from us, but.
I would think about Mike Salamondo. He did the affordable housing house on Stockbridge. He also did a development in Amrock to see if they'd be interested in just getting it there.
Might know, yeah. But there are agencies out there that do this where the cost of the town is relatively small. Now, I don't know about refurbishing an existing building, like, so to your point, I think it makes sense to have them come in and talk to us about it.
Larry, you can probably address that.
Larry, Larry's colleagues that he spoke to, there were three different firms, some of them in different.
Cost would be on gates? Yeah, I think you need to know that for putting, as we proposed, what we looked at initially, putting everything in gates. And then take a look, what's the cost for standalone? If it's 8 million, because that's what they gave us per, per foot. Was it 2, 350, 400 per foot?
Six, but plus the sum of costs of the money.
And then the final thing would be the, this building, we really need to know. Because the one thing I don't want to have is town hall being left out either. You know, it's, it's, these are things that the town needs to understand going forward. Whether or not they're going to vote on it in the next year or two or next five years, they're going to have a plan, they're going to have to say, in the next 10 years, we're going to have to address this, the cost's going to go up. At least the number's there, they have an idea.
To be the bearer of bad news, but you've got to throw in the elementary schools in that discussion as well.
Well, that comes down to whether or not we're going to have another closing one around elementary schools.
But that's what I mean. We've got to incorporate that into the discussion as well as we move forward to determine, just so it's on the radar, you know? You just can't put that to the side as far as prioritizing.
Well, you can't, more, I would only say, they, we just spent an enormous amount of money on schools for.
I'm not saying it's first. I'm saying it just needs to be in the picture.
I do not want to have another elementary school come up into the middle of the discussion saying, the elementary school's next, because that, that might leapfrog to the senior center.
I'm not saying it's next. I'm just saying that it's part, if you're saying that we're making a big decision for the next 20, 30, 50 years, you can't forget that those buildings are under our purview as well. That's all I'm saying.
Well, there's always the thought, if we're going to close a school like Adley, what about being able to put maybe a senior center or something up in that location?
On that location.
I mean, it's obviously out there.
Right.
And then you get into, well, what if you keep Adley and then you tear down Cushing? Build Fields. Bigger complex. I mean, my, my only problem with that is these are like a master plan through the planning department to think about the long-term. Ours was a strategic to deal with the issues that we've been dealing with over and over and over again. And the four things that we identified were senior center, middle school, town hall, and, you know, it turned out, public safety. And then the library was the fifth one.
Trisha, has Derkey Brown spent, they've completed their contract? Is there, are there any funds available that?
There's no funds to do any of this. Maybe a small amount left. So you're talking town meeting in the fall to do an appropriation, probably?
And what was the, he was throwing around 100,000, 150?
400 for this, for this study. I think it was 400.
Schematic design?
What is it, 400?
At least what it.
That's what I remember.
It seemed like.
For the schematic design?
It seems like. Send a proposal in.
Yeah, we, right.
They're so after. Did you do that?
I mean, it's, it seemed like a big enough number that we could probably ballpark it and get, I mean, if it's 22 or 26.
I tell you, we're around $20 million. We, let's face it.
Right.
No matter which way. And then even if they gave us a number, you know, you get plus or minuses here and there. Oh, we ran into this that we didn't know. I mean, you're around 20 million to renovate that building, and that's probably on a good day.
But Marty, don't you, you need to know that's, that kind of ballpark number for this building also.
Oh, no, I believe we do.
As John said, people have, have something to compare to.
Correct. No, we do. But all I'm saying is that we spent a half a million dollars to find out that what Tony said last year, they told us this number, and this year they just told us approximately. It hasn't really changed much, so they have a rough idea of what they're looking at. They're doing the square footage times, whatever, and they're saying this is roughly what it is. Anywhere in those numbers, I don't see anybody, I don't know.
And they had a number to renovate and expand this building, didn't they?
But this number, they gave, they threw something at us. Just, I think they threw something at us in that, in the meeting we were in. I think it was around, they said between 8 and 10 million dollars or something.
I remember that. But if we went back and listened to the meeting, I bet we could come up with some numbers and give us ballpark.
Three and a half hours.
More, can you do that?
Sure.
Sure. I could probably tell you right on the ticker where it is.
I think the one component that we don't really have a good idea of is what can we do with gates in terms of getting some senior housing there? How much would that actually cost the town? Or would someone need to buy the building and do it? Because then you're keeping the, the structure and the historical part of the town, filling that need, and then you could put the, the senior.
Center adjacent to it, yeah.
Then it would fall and.
And you get some value for it possibly, depending on how it's done.
Right. Unless a developer looks at it and says.
I think that's a good idea.
It's possible. But we don't know till we, it's not going to cost us anything to look at it. I'd still keep the gym as a part of the town, and you could section it off and have the courts, I guess. We'd have to figure out how to parse out the courts or, you know, to some degree.
Yeah. Or you have to. Or build the gym somewhere else.
But if somebody came and said, listen, I'll give you $6 million, you'll lose the gym, I think we'd be okay with that.
If you don't, the gym for a million is marvelous.
So, I mean, as far as what, the next steps, I mean, we want to get, we're going to get an idea of what it would do, what we would look at for town hall, correct? Yeah, you need to, just some numbers on town hall, I think you should, you know.
Unfortunately.
And we have an 8 million dollar.
The town, the public doesn't care about town hall.
No, they don't. It's not going to, it's not going to pass, probably. So, but I mean, we're looking at, for the senior center itself, where, pretty much wherever it is, it's around the 8 million dollar mark. We know that, that's a given. What can we get if we were to sell the gates building or use it for that? You know, an affordable aspect? So whatever we need to do to get those three steps, I mean, we need to get an appraisal probably from a commercial real estate person. That's going to cost, that's going to cost a lot too. I mean, I think Larry's, his opinion was of value for right now. I mean, the problem you're going to run into is we're going to be spending thousands and thousands of dollars for options that are not going to be, people are going to agree to, or we come up with estimates based upon Derkey Brown, and we use those estimates as to what the cost is going to be. Again, given their estimates that we're, without the hard, you know, schematic, but I'm like, part of me wants to go up that route and say, these are what we're anticipating the cost to be, instead of spending a lot of money and finding out we just threw money out the window because useless at this point. But as far as if we were to do something with the gates building, I think we need to know, I know an appraisal would probably cost us money, but we need to know what, what is it worth as it stands right now? And, you know, for whatever use that that person would want, the best use of the building.
All right. Stephanie can probably address it better, and I, she's in the building industry, but it's, you know, I think to get that opinion, someone's not just going to, you know, do a walk around gates, they're going to have to look at as best as possible.
Sure.
Structural, a lot, a lot of stuff, right?
Right. Of what you want to do with it.
They're going to need to know some.
Well, and that's kind of, right, right.
It's going to cost some money.
Or you'll just end up with your square footage ranges, which you already have.
We already have, right?
Right.
Probably pretty close, if anything, that low. That's my guess.
Right.
So can we move on to the next item or?
Well, what are our next steps again? Back to that.
Well, let's set up some town meetings. That's, that was a good idea. And let's see if we can get a developer to give us and, talk to those people and see anyone that actually does senior building.
Steve Coulter has probably everybody's names, I imagine, right?
Yeah, we have, I mean.
And then maybe, let's look at the, the site over, see what the complications were with the site over by the library. And then I think if we look through all the stuff we got from Derfie Brown, we can probably put some good estimates together.
And wasn't the person that was here with them the other ti, wasn't, weren't they involved in the initial site development of the plans and stuff?
Ashley and Doug were.
Right. Way back when?
John Catlin was the architect.
Okay, right.
He specializes in senior centers.
Right, so it was him that did the original 2001 plan? Okay, so maybe he would re, I'm sure it would cost us, ask him what were the problems with the site? Maybe it would cost us, I don't know. He might have the answer, why was there a site cost problem, you know?
Great.
Got all that, Tricia?
You know, I don't think the SABRC committee is looking for a whole lot of dishable work, but I don't think, I don't think we would mind helping out, maybe trying to get some of this information for you. If you see fit and you would like to charge the committee, I don't know if we want to change the name of it, but if you'd like to reappoint us or recharge us, you know, I think we'd be willing to help out with some of those issues.
Well, it's still a reuse, I mean, it's a reuse in some way, you know?
I can't speak for Karen, who's the chairman, but, you know, I think the kind of plot maybe, you know, something like that would work for the town.
Thank you.
Sounds good.
All right. Can we move on now? Is that good?
Yeah, I mean, if, if we could maybe ask Karen to come in and for another two or three month period, you know, based on what we've, you know, talked about tonight?
Right.
And maybe get us down the road just a little bit further.
Right, exactly.
You know, I put a lot of stock into what they say, you know, and based on what we've heard from Derky Brown, I, you know, think we can come up with a little more, some more hard numbers.
Right.
You know, same, I don't think this group looked and will look into, why was that site cost for the senior center of that library so expensive?
Right, because we're looking pretty much on that, that particular bill, so it was a whole different approach.
But if we talk about this again, Marty, can we do it like seven thirty?
Yeah. I'm kidding. This is about where we were the last time, right?
Thank you for coming.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on to new business? We have a discussion vote on some one-day wine and malt licenses?
I think my computer died.
Probably.
I might have some here, if I can read them, if I can still read them. Will the board of selectmen vote to approve a one-day wine and malt license to The Silent Chef for an event taking place at the Cituit Maritime Center on July 24, 2016, starting at 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. for a post-wedding breakfast?
Second, Mr. Vignani? Further discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Will the board of selectmen vote to approve a one-day wine and malt license to The Silent Chef for an event taking place at the Cituit Maritime Center on July 16, 2016, starting at 6:30 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. for a birthday party?
Second.
Second by Ms. Curran? Further discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous?
Will the board of selectmen approve a one-day wine and malt license to The Silent Chef for an event taking place at the Cituit Maritime Center on July 23, 2016, starting at 4:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. for a wedding reception?
Second.
Second by Ms. Curran? Further discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Finally, lastly, move the board of selectmen approve a one-day wine and malt license to tailor-made bartenders for an event taking place at the Cituit Maritime Center on July 16, 2016, and that's starting at 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. for a bridal show?
Second.
Second by Ms. Curran? Further discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. I just have a question. What is a five blank one day?
Will the board of selectmen approve five one-day wine and malt licenses for the Cituit Maritime Center?
Second.
Second by Mr. Danahy? Further discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous? Good. Okay, so...
Because it's so late, I would suggest that we go through these and do some of the...
Easy ones.
The simpler ones, if you will.
If you have something that you don't need to think about anymore than...
Right. Like, like I can, I can go to, okay, for instance, Cituit, Cituit Cultural, I can't talk, Cituit Cultural Council. Tab 25.
Move to appoint Sarah Smith to the cultural, Cituit Cultural...
Council.
Council.
Second.
Second by Ms. Curran? Further discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Want to stay on that one and go to the second because we have...
She didn't shout.
Well, she didn't, that's right.
How about Public Buildings Commission? Do we know Stephanie Holland?
Yeah, I think she's here, we could...
Didn't you appoint her last meeting?
I think we already, do we?
Didn't you already do Stephanie last meeting?
I was here for the interview, but you didn't.
No, you did not do it. They didn't do it.
Okay, let's do it again.
I'm sorry.
Move to appoint Stephanie Holland to the Public Buildings Commission?
Second.
Second by Mr. Danahy? Further discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Why don't we, can we go to traffic rules? That's a pretty simple one.
What tab is it?
Twenty-nine. It's just a couple of switches.
Move to put Taylor Billings onto the Traffic Rules Committee, taking the place of Mark Thompson.
Second.
Second by Mr. Danahy? Further discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
And then do we have to do the DPW appointment too, Tricia?
I'm sorry, what's that for?
The renewal?
For the traffic rules and regulations? We, putting Sean in instead of Kevin? Yeah, you should do that.
Yeah, so do, so somebody do that?
Move to appoint Sean McCarthy as a member of the Traffic Rules and Revelation, Regulation Committee?
I'll second that one.
Second by Mr. Danahy? Further discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Want to do...
Is border health, I think border health was a renewal, was it?
No, there was nothing new on border health.
Yeah, so we could do border health. It's a renewal for Stephen Panzi?
Yeah, we did do it.
Move to appoint Steve Panzi as a reappointment to the Board of Health?
Second.
Second by Mr. Vignani? Further discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. I'm going to cross this off so we can keep it all straight. North River Commission's a pretty simple one. There's only one person, it's a renewal.
What tab is that?
It's number 22.
I'll move to appoint Joseph P. Norton, Jr.
Second.
Second by Mr. Vignani? Further discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Economic Development Commission, 16.
I don't think there is any, is there?
One renew, one new renewal, sort of in question.
Move to appoint Ann Burbine for a renewal to the Economic Development Commission?
Second.
Second by Mr. Harris? Further discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Aye.
Social Coalition is, is what we... Constable, Social Coalition, let me see, 26.
Seven members.
We're jumping all over the place.
Yeah, but I know the ones we could do.
No idea what we're doing.
That's okay, don't worry about it.
All right.
All right, so we have...
Go for it again?
Yeah, we just have one renewal on Social Coalition.
I'll move Ann Burbine to the South Shore Coalition.
Second.
Second by Ms. Curran? Further discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Constable, 14. Sorry, Tony, just the ones that I know. You said go fast, was that Sean? I know, I know, I already went through them all. I've worked on this for a whole week.
Were the constables?
So we have a renewal.
I'll move Andre Farhart.
Hold on, can...
Well, can we, do we have to do this tonight?
Which one? This one here?
Yeah.
Yeah. We're not renewing constables that aren't town residents and retired police officers.
Why is it in here then?
Because I haven't probably had a chance to discuss it with Lorraine.
Okay, so we're going to hold.
Who are what? Who are what?
When they've come up for renewal, we have not renewed them.
For what? I didn't hear the...
Constable.
Right, and I understand that. I'm asking, what is the basis?
I haven't discussed it with Lorraine, I didn't.
What's the basis for it?
What I'm saying, you're saying if they're not resident and they're retired or they're police or what?
The board had an extensive discussion about this because we had seven or eight constables and we don't need them, and many of them did not live in town.
Yeah.
So we want to reserve that, as most towns do, to retired chiefs of police and residents, you know, who are residents of the town.
I agree.
So, yeah. But I, I have not met with Lorraine to go over these kinds of appointments. We've been focusing on the board and committee ones.
I'll rescind my motion.
Yeah.
Rescind the motion.
So what you've been doing is as they came up for renewal, you just didn't renew them.
Okay.
Because you have Brian Stewart now and you have...
Donald Lad.
Yeah.
I don't know who he is.
Okay, so it's tab five, beautification.
I nominate Donna Bangor for the Beautification Commission?
I'll second that.
Second by Mr. Danahy? Further discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Abstain.
Unanimous.
I'm a volunteer.
Oh, four zero?
Just...
And we already did Public Building Commission.
I nominate Andrea Steele. Did we do her yet? For beautification?
Oh, is she, is she, yeah?
Yes.
Yep.
I'll second that.
Second by Mr. Danahy? Further discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Abstain.
Abstain again. Okay, I want to do the, okay, I... I need to go to...
Want to do Affordable Housing Trust?
Sure.
What tab is that?
Two.
Which was missing here?
There's one renewal and then there's...
There's four openings, one renewal, and one applicant.
One applicant.
On affordable housing.
Move to appoint Lisa Fattan to the Affordable Housing Trust?
Second by Mr. Vignani? Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I have to abstain because I'm a member of the trust.
All those against?
Aye.
Okay. Three to one with one abstention? And then we also...
Because you're the liaison?
I'm not the liaison, John's the liaison, I'm actually on the trust.
She's made a member.
Because a board of selectmen member is actually a member of the trust as well.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we also have a renewal on that same...
Yeah, I'll move Ruth Wagner to the Affordable Housing Trust?
Second.
Second by Mr. Harris? Further discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right.
Abstain. She's grateful.
I would like to do the Council on Aging, because we have some, we need to get this, they've got a meeting coming up and we're trying to get a committee together.
Two.
What number is it?
Fifteen.
Just, let's regroup for one second so I can...
No problem. Regroup.
So that's tab 15?
It is, sir. Correct.
Michelle, thank you and Antoinette and Lorraine for this book. I know they thanked you last week, but it's great. It's very helpful. So we have three openings?
That's correct, yeah, and we have six applicants. They were all excellent, so it's to the board's pleasure, I guess.
I vote to appoint Janice Desmond...
Second.
...as a member on Council on Aging.
For three, term of three years or until a replacement?
Yes.
Second by Ms. Curran? Further discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I nominate Helen Jablonski to the Council on Aging for a term of three years or until a replacement is appointed?
Second.